All right, everybody. Can you hear me? All right. So, welcome. We've got a lot of important topics we're going to discuss tonight. I wanted to remind people a little bit how we take public comments, especially since we have a bunch of people that are new to the process. So, when we take public comment, it's a three-minute limit and it's on the item. So, the way this is going to work tonight is there's going to be a couple of presentations at the beginning. These are on safety, so I think they're going to be of interest to everyone. We're going to get one from Cal Water and one from Woodside Fire. After we finish those presentations, we're going to have a short town manager report, and then there'll be oral communications. This is your opportunity if you want to comment on anything that's not on the agenda. So, this is not for anything that we're going to talk about tonight. This is something else you want to tell the council that's not on the agenda. Once we're finished with that, we're going to go to consent agenda. And then I'll sort of bring more information in there. But I just wanted to give people an idea how this works. So, I'll give the public a sense for when there's the right time to discuss their particular topics. All right. So, I think with that, Dawn, are you ready to present?
Mr. Vice Mayor Linder.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm so excited. There's so many good things. Yes, thank you. So.
Absolutely. Good evening. Councilmember Flynn.
Present.
Councilmember Hefsey.
Present.
Councilmember Walter.
Present.
Vice Mayor Taylor.
Present.
Mayor Hefsey is absent this evening. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for that reminder.
And I can key up the presentations for you if you'd like.
That would be great. So, Dawn, are you ready? If you want to, so you're welcome to stand there or if you want to sit and use the mic, whichever one you're most comfortable with. We're happy to concede.
So, Mr. Vice Mayor, this is a presentation that we've been looking at doing for a number of months. We have with us Dawn from Cal Water and on Zoom, we have Kimberly from Woodside Fire. What I asked them to do was to look at two questions. One is the impact of additional housing on water and on fire. Also, recommend, how do we handle when there is a fire? Do we have water? And also recommendations from Woodside Fire on how to do prevention and also what to do in the event of other fires. So, it's that kind of thing that the council's been interested in, the public's been interested in. So, with that, we'll go to Dawn from Al Fire.
Thank you. I'm just doing a sound check. Can you hear me? Is this appropriate?
Yeah, just speak, speak closely.
A little bit louder?
Can you hear, when you can hear your voice, then it's loud enough.
Okay, okay. Thank you. Well, thank you, town council members, Vice Mayor, Mr. Linder. Thank you for allowing me to come speak with you tonight. I'm going to start by just, well, first of all, let me, as mentioned, I'm Dawn Smithson. I'm the district manager for California Water Service in the Bear Gulch District where we currently have service. I'm going to give a very brief overview of who we are as a company because we tend to confuse people. People don't know if we are a large company, a small company, a private company, a public company. Is there, is everything okay? Okay. So, just briefly, we are actually a very large privately-owned water company. We're the third largest in the United States and the largest west of the Mississippi. We are going to be in service for 100 years, starting next year, and we anticipate being here for another 100 years. So, we're really proud of that. We serve customers through our Washington Water Service, Hawaii Water Service, New Mexico Water Service, and Texas Water Service. But focusing on California Water Service is our largest water company. And just if I could draw your attention to the dots on the map in California Water Service, those are where we have, that's where we have districts that we provide waters for our customers. So, you can see it goes all the way from Chico down to several water districts in the Los Angeles area. But I showed this because while each one of those dots is a specific community, you can imagine owners in Portola Valley have very different needs than our customers in Chico or Bakersfield or Los Angeles. And so, we are allowed some flexibility to host our districts and serve our customers where they are while we have the backing of a large company. And so, I bring this up because we love being that corner store for you. But if we snap our fingers in an emergency, we have employees coming from all over California to come assist us. So, I'm going to focus a little bit more on the peninsula where we are. This large area right there where the star is is the Bear Gulch District. That's where we are. And north of us is the Bay Shore District, these three little districts. And then across the bay, we have the Livermore District. The southeast of us, we have the Los Altos Suburban District. I also happen to be the district manager for the Los Altos Suburban District. So, we all work very well together, especially the Los Altos Suburban District. And same holds true. If there's ever an emergency, we can snap our fingers and we'll be there to support each other. The one more thing I want to mention is where our water comes from. Not everyone knows this, and it is helpful, I think. We have eight connections with the San Francisco Public Utilities Commission, the SFPUC. That's where we get approximately 90% of our water from. It's very, very good water, but it is very, very expensive water. So, we have another option, and that's we have a reservoir in Atherton where we collect water from this blue area right here is our 1,200-acre watershed. It's pristine, it's protected. We capture that water in two different intakes and we flow that to the reservoir in Atherton. That supplies about 10% of our water supply. It is also very good water, but it is cheaper and we can pass that savings directly on to our customers. So, while we're speaking about water, I wanted just to address that I was asked to address the question, what impact does additional housing units have on our water supply? Well, Cal Water is constantly evaluating the demands of our water supply. And the 2020 Urban Water Management Plan evaluates water demands through 2045. But this year, we'll be doing, updating our Urban Water Management Plan, which will leave us, which will, sorry, which will provide projections through the year 2050. So, as I mentioned, we receive most of our water from SFPUC, and our 2020 Urban Water Management Plan shows that we have an adequate supply for our anticipated growth in this area. However, we will be updating the Urban Water Management Plan, so stay tuned for results from that. So, now we're going to switch gears to fire preparation and response. The company, Cal Water, believes that this is very important. And it was about eight to 10 years ago, we sent employees to respond to various fires, the Paradise Fire, the Erskine Fire, the Woolsey Fire, and many, many others. And our CEO saw that this was a really important feature of who we are as a company. And so, he declared then that he, there are certain things to be put into place, and one is actually a wildfire task force. They make sure that we do everything we can to be as prepared for wildfires as possible. And one of the major ways that we prepare for wildfire or any fire or any emergency is to train, 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 train. So, we hold Emergency Operations Center tabletop exercises every single year for every single employee in our company, our CEO, our officers, every employee in the company. The person that you see reading your meter, they have gone through an Emergency Operations Center training that year. They've also gone through an annual wildfire training, which is another mandatory training that every employee goes through every single year. And then we host Emergency Operations Center tabletop exercises for the community in various locations. Ours on the peninsula in this area will be in Los Altos Suburban District in next month. And then several of us have been trained on the State EOC, County EOC. And you can see this, that's me, so I've also been trained by the state. And then the last thing I want to mention is our Operations Rapid Response Team. We call it the ORT. I call them the Special Forces of Emergency Response in the Water Utility. They are highly-trained individuals. They're employees who have come forward and said, I want to be available to respond in the event of an emergency. They have to interview and they are hand-selected, and then they go through extensive training. And if there's an emergency, they're, they are going to be the first ones to pull out. Their wheels will be the first ones to hit the ground. So, obviously, we do our part to prepare for wildfires by doing our vegetation maintenance. In the event of an emergency, we do not want our facilities to be compromised by a fire. We want to do everything we can to make sure that our facilities are available for the fire departments when they need it. And then every year, we do our, we have, or do our fire hydrant maintenance. We have a fire hydrant foreman, but this is their only responsibility. They lay eyes on every single hydrant in their system every year to make sure that it looks like everything is okay with this fire hydrant. And then one-fifth of the hydrants are developed, get a deep maintenance every, so every five years. So, one-fifth of our system gets a deep maintenance. And then we've partnered with Pano AI for early fire detection. And going back to what I mentioned, as far as we want to make sure that our facilities are working as well as they can for our fire departments. We don't want, if their power is shut off and it could get shut off, we don't want for our pumps to stop working. That's the last thing we want. So, we've installed permanent generators everywhere that we know could be compromised. And then we have a fleet of temporary generators. And these are also used for the public safety power shut-off events that we've all experienced. Next, we have our main replacement program. We have over 300 miles of main in our districts. Every foot of that main has been analyzed for its risk of failure. We don't want our mains to fail and we don't want to be responding to them in an emergency situation. So, we have a main replacement program that replaces 13,000 feet a year. And in doing so, we're able to upgrade those mains, possibly if needed, for better fire flow. And we work with the fire department to place additional fire hydrants if necessary. And one of the biggest things we do, also something that our CEO recognized and created a team behind, is we want to be as versatile in our water system management as possible. This is because if you have a tank that serves a certain area and then you have another tank that serves another certain area, if there's a fire, this tank is getting lower and lower and lower. But we can and we have installed valves between these two different zones so that we can pull water from another zone where they're not normally connected. So, if a firefighter needs to have water from a different zone quickly, we can do that for them. And then we work with our firefighters, just whatever they need. And so, recently, in the last 10 years or so, we've been providing a location for them to practice and train new firefighters. And this is actually our field yard. And so, they use this, our, those are our settling ponds. They can shoot the water, I don't know if that's a type of word, shoot, shoot the water into the settling ponds and we can capture that and pump it back up to our reservoir and recycle that water. And this comes in handy because when there is a fire, we want to make sure that we have those connections with not just our firefighters and our fire districts, but as you see, all these other agencies, including you, so that we can communicate during a fire. And the reason I have this picture here is because this was a real picture in the Woolsey Fire. And we had a situation where a tank was getting dangerously low and we communicated with the fire department, don't pull from that hydrant, pull from the hydrant around the corner. It's connected to a different zone. You can still get the water you need, but you won't run out of water. And they did not run out of water. Their hydrants did not run out of water. So, if there is a main break, we need to make sure that that water is still available for our firefighters. And so, we have miles and miles of this lay-flat hose, we call it. You can hook it up to one side, a fire hydrant on one side of the break, and hook it up to a hydrant on the other side of the break. And you can flow water through that lay-flat hose, and that will keep the water flowing for our firefighters. Then after an emergency, we have these wonderful emergency operations trailers. And they are, they contain enough equipment to support six employees for seven days. And they have all the necessary equipment to make common repairs. So, we have a team, three teams, two, three teams of two people who can go out and make repairs. And we're not sure what communication we'll have available to us. So, we have a variety of communication options. But what we learned from the Maui fires, from our Hawaii Water Service, is that what worked best was a whiteboard, actually. Technology didn't do what it was supposed to do. So, we, they had a whiteboard and somebody came to the office and said, okay, nobody's here. I'm going to write where I'm going. I'm going to go check on this. And then the next person came and said, I'm going to go check on that. And then they come back and say, here's what I found. I'm going to go check on that. So, we all now have these very large whiteboards. And it seems silly, but sometimes technology is not all that it's cracked up to be. And one of the last things I want to mention is after an emergency, you might see our pods, our point-of-distribution areas, which is just a highly effective way of distributing materials. In this case, the material would be water if we needed to distribute potable water. And this is actually a picture that was taken in our Erskine Fire. And we received the NAWC Living Water Award for our response to that fire. Okay. So, just in conclusion, I hope you can see that preparedness is very important to Cal Water. I gave a very, very high-level overview. I could have spoken for hours on this topic as it's so important to us and it's part of our daily lives. But we do everything we can to try and prevent emergencies from happening, and then we try to be prepared for what might happen.
Thank you, Dawn. Are there any questions from the council?
Thank you, Dawn, for coming to visit us. Quick question for you. As we, as homeowners start to remodel their homes or build new homes, they're now required to put in fire sprinklers. And that entails usually upgrading the size of their meter. Cal Water offers a discount for those that go to one inch. They still get to get the 5/8 inch size. But for those residents in our community that actually need a larger meter, because, most usually because of heights and where they're located on a hill with respect to the tanks or whatever, they end up needing larger hoses. They don't, you don't offer that discount. Is there any way we could ask that you do offer a discount for those that only require a larger meter because of a fire sprinkler?
Yes, so this has been brought to my attention. And we have looked at it in the past. And it is, it's not just that we give a discount because it's, you know, we just want to give a discount. It's based on a mathematical formula, is my understanding. And so, when you're, when you have a meter and a smaller meter and you need a larger meter for fire suppression, the percentage of the water that's needed is a larger percentage of the meter size. Does that make sense? So, if you have, if you have a large property and you already need a large meter, you might need a larger-sized meter, but the percentage of that is still going to be very large. So, that's my understanding of why we haven't offered it because the calculation wouldn't make the discount that significant. But the last time we looked into this was several years ago. And so, I've brought it up again and we decided that we will look into it again.
Okay, great. The other question I had is where can the community find sort of updates on major leaks or maintenances? A couple of days ago, there was a flush, there was a sign eventually put out on Sioux Way about that the, some water main was being flushed. And it went on for like three days or some, water was running for a really long time. So, yes, eventually a sign was put out there, but it would have been helpful for us to, for the community kind of to know that, you know, you are already aware of the problem or you were actually doing maintenance or whatever was going on. So, I'm just wondering if there's some sort of real-time place that the community can go to to kind of get updates?
So, if it's a project that we know we are anticipating, we try to do press releases. We try to leave door hangers or send letters to people in the immediate community. But that's not going to hit everyone. I'm sorry to hear about that. I will go back and double-check and see why there was a delay on getting the signs out. Normally, they're actually really very, about that. But I will reiterate that that's an important feature of our work. We can, anybody can always call to our after-hours call number or it's our customer service number that goes into our after-hours call number and we have someone on call all the time. So, it's, it's on our website and I can say it for the record. It's 650-561-9709. And they can call anytime. Or they can send an email to infobg@calwater.com and get a response.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Just wanted to say, thank you for talking to the geologic safety. And do you feel that we're adequately protected against disruption of our water system? Being as both, San Andreas crosses both, both your, all your lines?
Well, I can say that we've done everything we can to date. We're constantly evaluating to see where we can improve. We don't want to be responding to emergencies. We'd rather not have emergencies to respond to. So, we're doing as much upfront work as possible. I would need to double-check with our engineering department, but I believe that we've installed everything that we've identified to date. There will probably be some portions of mains that still need to be, when the time is right, to have those fault crossings put in. But I know whenever we get the opportunity, we do do that. So, I can't say that with all certainty that we're protected. We won't have any problems if we have an emergency. I can say that we are doing everything we can to try and prevent emergencies as much as possible.
Thank you. Keep it up.
So, thanks for your presentation. Super helpful. A couple of things. You said that the costs from SFPUC were expensive. Could I get it per gallon and per acre-foot?
I, I can get that to you because I don't have it in my memory right now. I hate, I can guess, but I wouldn't want to do that.
Okay. Can I also, you know, along Councilmember Flynn's comments about incentives to lower, you know, Portola Valley is, has, is one of the bigger users of water in Silicon Valley. And I haven't seen many incentives from Cal Water to help incentivize people to cut down on water. And, you know, even when you have a meter on a large lot and you're, and you're using all drought-resistant, there's not any recognition to residents, like that they could have a, you know, save water with a smaller meter because they're not using enough water, for instance.
I'm sorry. Could you repeat that last word?
Sorry, I didn't say that very clearly. You know, they could save money, for instance, with like a one, one-inch meter, one-and-a-half-inch meter, for instance, instead of a two-inch meter if they're not using very much water. And there's no incentive from Cal Water. You guys are a for-profit company and I recognize that, right? So, what can you do to help our residents, though, who are not using very much water?
So, a couple of things. One, we've recently established a fourth tier. So, every tier gets more expensive with the more water you use. We were, we asked for and we were approved by the Public Utilities Commission to establish a fourth tier. So, the lowest tiers are actually now the cheapest. So, if you can stay within those, that's really more what we think of for like, you know, for life. And, you know, we can, that's, actually, the price of that tier has gone down. The price of the top tier has gone up significantly.
But your water meter, like a two-inch meter, is, you know, $220 a month. And they could, you know, for instance, and for a one or, for a one-tier or two-tier, they don't need that big of a meter, right?
It depends on if that residence has fire sprinklers or not. So, those meters are designed specifically to be able to maintain the fire sprinkler. So, our agreement is with the fire department, if you can show the fire department through your fire sprinkler engineer that you can sustain a smaller meter, then we are happy to downsize that meter. But we won't do it if it jeopardizes the safety of them.
Okay, that makes sense. Thank you. What about, can you also speak to leak sensors? My understanding is you guys installed leak sensors or some such? Could you expand on that? I just, I would like more depth. I don't know much.
Leak, leak sensors, I, so I'll, you may, you may be referring to one of two things. One, we've installed AMI meters in pretty much all of Portola Valley now. So, every resident should know how much water they're using in real time. And they should get alerts if they're, if they have a leak on their property. Because I know some of the properties can be substantial and you might not know if you have a leak. So, this is something that we've worked collaboratively with the town of Portola Valley to get installed. So, that's, that's one thing. Another thing that we do is we do leak-detection audits every year to try and see if we can identify where maybe we're losing water. I'm not sure if that's what you were referring to as well. Sometimes if we have an area where we're not sure, it's a long stretch of main, we may be losing water. We can put up, it's, I don't remember the name of them, but you can hook them up to fire hydrants and it sounds the main and can detect if there's leaks too. So, we try very hard to make sure that we're not losing water through leaks.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Great. So, again, thank you, Dawn. So, and one thing I would add is Dawn and I have talked about the issue with meters. And Cal Water will come out and if you can show the fire department that you can sustain a lower meter, they'll come out and replace it for free. This is not a charge. They'll actually come out. You just need to demonstrate it. So, I think they're being very cooperative in working that. So, the other question, Dawn, I have for you is would you be willing to hang around till after Kim does the Woodside Fire in case the public has any questions for you?
Absolutely.
Okay, so it'll, it'll probably keep you here, probably another 20 minutes or so?
No, I want to hear what Kim has to say.
Okay, great. Then that's perfect. So, if you could just stay here, then we'll bring Kim on next. We'll ask Kim some questions, then I'm going to open it up to the public. And if they have questions for you, then I'll ask you to come back up.
Absolutely.
Great. Thank you again for your presentation. So, Mark, do you want to introduce Kim or should I introduce Kim? I'm happy to do it either way. Go right ahead. Okay. Yeah, is there any chance of sending this on? It's not a big deal, but, okay. But, but with that said, hi, Kim.
Good evening, everybody.
So, welcome. So, you can start presenting anytime you're ready.
Okay, let me go ahead and share my screen. Good evening. Sorry I'm not there in person. I'm actually on, my kids have spring break this week. They're one of the schools that were late in the whole scheme of things. But I'm glad that I was able to be here. And let me just make sure that you're seeing my screen. Are you seeing the presentation?
Yeah, we're waiting for, there we go. Now we get the full slide up.
Okay, perfect. Okay, great. So, I'm going to be switching gears a little bit. Dawn did a great job on how Cal Water operates and their response. I think people are pretty well-aware of how the fire department responds. So, I wanted to change a little bit because one of the things that we are focusing on is where do we see our future? How is construction going to play a part in our future? And a big thing that I'm trying to educate everybody is how we are going to adapt to wildfire because that is a part of, that is where we are. It's inevitable in a lot of areas and we need to be prepared. And we just, we're in the beautiful area and, but we need to prepare for that wildfire living. So, I'm going to skip through some of these slides because I do want to say that there's a presentation I'll be doing within the next couple of months at the Portola Valley's Wildfire Preparedness Committee meeting that's going to be on Lessons Learned. And so, I'm just going to do a quick little overview of some of the information. I do really want to implore people to really watch this video, Design for Disaster. It is from the 1962 documentary of a fire that occurred 1961. It was the Bel Air Fire. And it was in the Palisades area. So, it's something that happened a long time ago and things have not changed. In all these years, things have not changed. And I'm going to go into what's happening with that. So, let me skip through a little bit. This is a great information overview on history. I always like to start with history because sometimes I think we forget what has happened in California with wildfires. We know they happen all the time. They've been going on back since 1889. It really took over back in 2017 with the Tubbs Fire. When that came through, that was one of our largest fires as far as what it destroyed. And it was, it kind of started to shift where California fires in our history were starting to really burn. And since then, we've been burning a lot every year. So, this is just a quick overview on that. And I actually have this presentation up on our website that I can post so people can take time and actually. so people can take time and actually read through everything, but for the sake of time and when it continue on. But, uh, just want to iterate our history. Adapting to living with fire and becoming a fire adapted community, which is the direction that we need to go to. We cannot continue how we've been. I call it a paradigm shift. A lot of people understand what a paradigm shift. We've lived a certain way for so long and we need to start making changes to, in order for us to survive. If any wildfire comes in, we have to start making these changes, which is one thing that our fuel mitigation ordinance has led us into with defensible space. Now is home hardening and that's going to go into a lot of our future construction. You could see this as a simple picture from Coffee Park Fire. You can see what it looked like before and what it looked like after. What always amazes me with fire is sometimes we forget that vegetation, though vegetation and defensible space are really important. A lot of times, it's actually the structures burning that lead to vegetation burning, not vegetation to fat, to structures, but structures to vegetation. And here's a big reason why. It's part of our housing crisis. This a lot, I've seen a lot of research and I'm still going to say it as my opinion. And I think it's, it's a challenge that cities and towns are facing because you are under the requirements that the state is putting upon you, that we have to develop all these lands. We have to increase all the housing, bring more housing. But that's one of our biggest challenges. And I will say that it's something that I am actively, through legislature, trying to work on that reduction to realize that especially in areas like the Wui, where we are in wild urban interface, we cannot afford to keep increasing all our housing and development. We are removing trees that once stood. We are putting houses in that place. We have seen through history how fires burn. They burn all the time in, in the same area or near those areas as part of its nature of coming through. But now we're putting houses in that area. But because we can't do anything right now, as one of our long-term efforts, we need to look at how we're doing construction. And that's part of that paradigm shift. Portola Valley thankfully has adopted Chapter 7A. But there are, there's so much more than just Chapter 7A that we can do as a, what we're going to be looking at for developing in the future. And it's something we need to look at as we adopt our new codes, because we are in a, a code adoption year, is looking at how we can make that. I don't want to say more restrictive, because sometimes more restrictive people take that as, oh my gosh, this is going to cost us more money. Which I'm going to show a slide a little bit on what fire resistant construction looks over time, thanks to a study that was done. But it's more that we need to look at how we're going to harden our structures to increase the survivability. If firefighters can't make it to your house, can't make it to your community, can't make it to your neighborhood, you have to be able, your structure, your home, your property needs to be able to withstand a fire coming through. And it's not just the wildfire front. Think sometimes people think, oh my gosh, the wildfire front's coming. It's more those embers, that lot of it, we have a lot of trees in our, in our district. Those trees put off a lot of embers. Those embers can fly for many miles. It's those embers that land within five feet of the structure. And we'll see studies that support this, that is actually causing what you're seeing in this photo, the structure to structure ignition of every house being brought to the ground. And you still have got some vegetation that's around it. When I say paradigm, to change our paradigm, we need to change our mentality and how we build, rather than built to burn, built to resist. For many, many years, we've ignored the signs. We haven't been doing what we need to start resisting more. Yes, Portola Valley has Chapter 7A, but like I said, there are more requirements available and out there that can increase our resistibility and lower that vulnerability to wildfires. And that's the direction we need to go. A quick snapshot of what we need to look at is homeowners, because homeowners, whether we're doing new construction or a remodel, any kind of improvements to our home, we know that there's a threshold that brings in extra requirements bringing up to code. But I thought that these three things, which are super important in understanding, in 2017, which now seems a long time ago, but I can only imagine what our numbers are at now, 129 million dead trees in California. And that's due to wildfire, drought and insect infestation. All those things are contributing to why California is burning so much more than what it used to. And every year, we're increasing that amount of death, which is why when people say, why are we having so many wildfires? These are contributing factors. The ignition category, accidental fire ignition. It's causing 95% of the wildfires in California. Whether it's from, um, power, well, power lines have been a big one for P G and E. We're looking at how can we change that? How can we, how can those adjustments be made to change that? But that is an ignition factor, accidental ignitions. Sometimes whether it's barbecuing, maybe it's fires that were from cooking, a lot of contributing factors that start these fires is what ends up igniting more fires, creating that wildfire response. And then weather. We've been seeing the strong winds, dry climate, humidity levels, which is why the preparation of how we're preparing as we move forward is really important. And we have to catch it at, at our construction phase. It's a lot more challenging with existing construction. Existing construction, we can only do so much. Our fuel mitigation ordinance is requiring that defensible space, but we can't do a lot for the home hardening. We are making recommendations and we're looking through building codes. And like I said, the new code adoption of looking at how we can make that more robust to create more protection around the homes. But in retrospect, when we're looking at existing, difficult, but part of that paradigm shift is to catch it on the new construction. So what you need to know is homeowners, we need to reduce those fuels to slow the fire. That's the biggest thing, whether it's thinning out tree canopies, maintaining our trees, limbing them up, creating some separation. Hillside's a little bit different. We will always recommend that you consult with an arborist and specialist on how you can separate your trees. The whole thing is creating a, a candle wick to your structure. So if you have a lot of trees or shrubs that create a pathway to your structure, that's where you want to start to concentrate, how to reduce that, how to reduce those fuels. Starting from the part of you, the closest part of your house, zone zero, working out, hardening your homes, that's vents, roofs, windows, which we'll see in some slides here. So here's what we need to do with our existing construction and our new construction. A lot of it comes to strategic, strategic planting, our smarter landscaping. Zone zero, that is the biggest part. That is, I can't tell you how much I have seen in research that supports how houses have survived. We've seen exact, people, people have gone to the Palisades Fire in L A and they've been doing a lot of videos and research. I B H S has done a lot of research. People have come back and said, these houses were standing. Could it have been for these contributing factors? And that'll be a presentation I do later on Lessons Learned. But it does show how the zone zero was very effective, how vents were effective, windows were effective, roofing was, uh, effective. So that's where we're looking at how we're going to protect as we move forward, because we can't change what is required on housing. But what we can do is make changes with how we're building. So this is a slide I wanted to bring up. So this was a study that was done with I B H S, which is the Institute for Business Housing Safety. And, um, the Clearance Headwater, they did a great study that, or sorry, Economics Headwater, they did a great study that kind of broke down. Some of these numbers look high, but overall, just on a basic level, costs were $2,800 over for a baseline home. That was if you were doing construction, what it would cost to build your house with fire, more fire resistant construction. Now, if you're doing it on the optimum level, every single thing at the highest level of wildfire resistance, it increased overall in Northern California, 18,000, by $18,000. And you can see the numbers there. But I will say that when I was looking at these numbers, I mean, look at what the cost is for a remodel of a house and what construction is. If you look at the long-term investment of what you're doing by building in this way and us looking at if a wildfire were to come through and how your house would survive, makes a big impact on what insurance would actually cost in rebuilding a completely destroyed home as opposed to a house that was built with less vulnerabilities. Also, not to mention cost energy savings and insulation. So there, there are other benefits other than the wildfire side. But because we're talking more on the wildfire subject, I think, I thought these numbers were interesting. And I think it's important for people to see that if we're already spending money to do a, a remodeling construction, fire resistant construction is well worth the benefit of what you're going to get in your return. And it's definitely where we need to go. Um, because of the history I was showing before, which is why history is important. Those Palisades Fire, they've burned in the same area already twice in the last five years. Not exactly in that area, but in neighboring areas nearby. Kind of starts to go as, why are we not building with the fire resistant mentality? Building to resist, rather building to burn. We need to start learning our lessons. This is just a quick slide on showing how you can prioritize what you're doing if you're looking at retrofitting your home for what you have in existing construction, which are the most important parts of, um, of increasing that fire resistant side of hardening your home. And I just brought this up, we're not going to watch it, but please, you can go. I B H S, their website has so many great, um, videos on why zone zero, why fire resistant construction, all the different research that's been done of why it works. These photos are really what an ember storm looks like. So it's not just the fire front coming to your house. But again, like I've spoken, those, the embers that fly for miles, this is where they're landing, because they hit your house, they fall to the ground. They're going to find any fuel they can, which is why that zone zero is so important. And having that, that, uh, ember resistant area. I also, this is a slide I like to use a lot, because when we talk about fire department response. So we already know if a fire were to happen in Portola Valley, our firefighters would be responding to that fire front. We would be, every resource would be there being maxed out, because we are a small department. We'd already be calling in for Cal Fire Resources to come and support. All the departments that would be coming in to help support during a wildfire, this is a placard system they use. This is how they assess homes that they're going to utilize or that they are going to utilize to know if it's a house they can protect and defend, or if it's one they're just going to pass on and not even worry about and leave it for destruction. These are the same, these are the main things are access, water, defensible space. And of course, they always look for a civilian's present. But I want to keep, people to keep in mind, these are people that are not from Portola, not from Woodside Fire. They could be anywhere in the state or anywhere in the nation, coming to support us. And they're assessing your house for these things, which is why, again, it's important that we keep up with the requirements as a homeowner responsibility. It is part of a responsibility for every homeowner. And again, quick overview, but these are the information, but you can see that on our website. And I put up some Q R, some Q R codes, some important information for being signed up, for being informed. Genesis Protect is where you want to go to for evacuation, so you know your zone. There's an app, the app gets quicker updates than going online. Just want to keep stressing that. It's something that San Mateo County Emergency Management, uh, Department. They want people to have that Genesis Protect app, because you will get those updates immediately for zones that are evacuated and those are a warning. And thank you, everybody. I'm available for questions.
Great. Great. Thank you, Kim. Um, could you speak to a couple of things? First of all, you might tell people your website, um, for those people who don't know. Um, the next one would be, you know, you and I have met, you know, regularly and often. Um, I think it's worth sort of pointing out that, you know, there's no amount of water that's going to put out a wildfire. You know, you and I have talked about this, so if you could speak to that. Um, also, if you could speak a little bit to what people should do during a red flag. So, and particularly with their gardeners and people running, you know, weed whackers and stuff. And then finally, just if you could do a quick mention on the chipper program.
Yes. So first, our website is W W W dot woodsidefire.org. Please do sign up. Uh, we do have e-notifications that go out for anything important, newsletters, media information, if we put out new video clips, everything that's going on in the fire district, but everything that's going on county and statewide that we think is valuable information for residents to be updated and be knowledgeable on. Everything is on our website. We update it often. The next part is, yes, water. So we did put out a press release about water. Cal Water does a lot to prepare for any type of wildfire or even, um, any kind of fire that's going on. But let me stress, the hydrants that are in place, the reason they are there has nothing to do with wildfire. It has to do with structure fires. So the pressure that is put out by each hydrant is for a structure fire or even a vehicle fire that may be close by, that the engines are tying into. Structure fires rely on so much water from a hydrant for operational use. Whereas a wildfire, if you watch these wildfires, and sometimes I had a interesting question recently, a gentleman, a resident has said, you know, I've seen firefighters come out to a wildfire that started really small. And how is it that when they are there and they're fighting the fire, why they, why it doesn't, why they can't put it out? Why does it get so big? And one of my answers was, there's a lot that pertains or takes into effect as to why a fire grows so quickly, especially in the wildland. Whether it's topography, weather, winds, all those things pay a contributing factor. If you ever watch water, when we're spraying water with our hoses, if there's any breeze or wind going on, you'll see the water just go with the wind. So it's not actually falling on the fire, which is why it's a reminder, as Craig was just saying, no amount of water from hoses are going to put out an entire wildfire. It's just, it's challenging. They mitigate the best they can. The whole goal in a wildfire, when firefighters are out there, they're trying to protect it from getting bigger. They're trying to maintain lines to restrict the fire from traveling to getting into the community and to provide structure protection the best they can. But there's a lot of different, I guess you could say, mother nature, that what's out there, what it, what hinders and creates challenges for them that doesn't allow them to put the water, using water to put out the fire. So that's why when people think, oh, our hydrants, the hydrants were not made to put out wildfires. They are made for structure fires. And if you're more interested in information, please do visit our website. I have a whole educational piece that talks about what the differences are, so you understand how hydrants are used. And, um, the other question that you had for our chipper program, so that it, it is new. The chipper program's the same, dates are pretty much the same. So if you already know typically when the chippers come around to chip around your house, that is staying the same. What we're changing is the reason why we are asking for reservations. And this year, we know it's a transitional period because it is new. We are asking for those reservations in advance, because it is helping us keep track of who is having their, who is putting out piles for chipper. It gives us statistics and data, so we can analyze how much is actually being done. Because when we apply for grants and just providing information as a state on what we're doing to mitigate as a whole, as a community, we can start putting in cubic information on how much residents are participating in this program. It also cuts down staff time. We have staff that manually enter everything into our database for what people are doing. And we also have our fuel mitigation staff that go out on a Sunday, on their day off, for them to look at how piles are set up and where, so that they can strategically route where they're going. By doing the reservations in advance, it's going to cut out that time and they can already plan without even having to go out there. So there's a lot of benefits with the new reservation system, which only takes about five minutes of time. You can only reserve one spot at a time. So even though you get two pickups, reserve your spot for the first one after your first pickup. Then you can reserve your spot for the second one. It shouldn't take a lot of time. It basically asks for your name, your email, and if you want to opt in for text messages. And then you just reserve your date. So it's really not a time consuming process. I know there's been some concern from residents saying, oh, you know, people aren't just going to do it if they have to do all this work. Well, it is a free service. We are trying to increase the work that we're doing for mitigation. We've seen it in Marin, we've seen it in other jurisdictions, Tahoe. People use the system to make those reservations. Actually, in other jurisdictions, they won't even pick you up at all unless you make the reservation. So we're trying to make this a transition for people to get used to. It helps us out a lot. We're just asking for residents to help support the program. And I think there is one more thing, Craig, that you had asked. And I think there is one more thing, Craig, that you had asked for me to-
There was, thank you. So I was just saying, you know, what would be your advice to homeowners on red flag days? Particularly in terms of advice to their gardeners, et cetera.
So we have been working on education pieces. We did it on the last red flag warning. One of our biggest things is because it's not just homeowners are pretty good at knowing a lot about red flag, but it's the gardeners and it's all our visitors that come into the district that are doing work. We know Portola Valley does have a resolution on restricting equipment during red flag warning days. So we started to put out flyers and on our construction permits that we're putting out on our comment sheets. We're adding the comment that says for them to be aware if there is a red flag warning day, the restrictions and providing that kind of education. We also have flyers that when we're out and about doing inspections on properties, we're just giving them out to gardeners and contractors, just so they're aware when it does come through, that they know what they need to do on those red flag warning days. We're also working on increasing the amount of signs that we're putting out for red flag warning day and what you need to do with the QR code to scan to get more information. I know there's a lot of, in the older days, I would say, or back in history, I know a lot of residents have those red flag warning signs and they were putting them out and they, it was, it would just stay out there and not come in when red flag warning day was over. So we are trying to educate and ask residents, if you're going to put the signs out for red flag warning, please keep an eye out for what Woodside Fire is putting out and when we remove them, to just remove them altogether. Because it does create a mindset of complacency and people just stop looking at signs because there's so many around. So it is an education piece that we are working on, but it is something that we're working on our visitors more than just our residents.
Great, thank you. Questions from the council? I mean, I, you know, hey, would you like me to go-
No, no, it's fine.
I can do Helen first.
No, no, it's, it's fine. Thank you, Fire Marshal Giuliani for coming. What would be your recommendation for residents who don't have a lot of money? Where, where should they start? Should it be with some basic home hardening actions or should it be the defensible space? There's zero to, zero to five, zero to 30. And are there particular home hardening actions that are critical that they should start with?
Yes. So first, I would start with the, with the Zone Zero, the hardening or the ember resistance on the Zone Zero. And then the next thing would be their vents. And looking at whatever cracks and vulnerabilities are around their house. What kind of openings they have, whether it's in the roof or at the bottom of the structure, those first six inches under their house. How is it that embers can penetrate through there depending on what the construction type? I do recommend, it, it, it will be a great resource as, as our fire inspectors come through and do those home assessments to provide those homeowners that information. I am currently working on with our attorney on how we can provide, Woodside Fire can provide services to those lower income, people with disabilities, a different population of people on how we can provide services to do the defensible space for them at a reduced rate that would help support that effort. So it is something that we're looking at, how can we do that for, for homeowners? And, and then make those recommendations for home hardening.
So that's a perfect segue into my next question, this idea of checking for vents and cracks and any openings within a house. So I just wanted to talk a little bit about the passive house building standard. And that happens to be the best building standard in the world, but also the best building standard for creating a wildfire, a more wildfire safe home as well as a smoke protected home. We haven't really spoken about that, but when wildfire moves through is that your home becomes completely filled with smoke and all your furnishings and everything is destroyed and ruined. So if you built to a passive house standard or you house standard, it would prevent that because the standard has the highest air tightness of any type of energy efficiency standard. So end up with a very energy efficient standard. So I wanted to ask if Woodside Fire Protection District could support the bill that's moving through the California House. It's AB 368. It would allow the passive house building standard to be used as an alternative standard for energy efficiency. So I just would love it if you would look into that and possibly send a note to support it.
Yes, we'll look into that. So I sit on California's Legislature Committee for the Fire Prevention Officers Association. So we are constantly looking at all the bills that are coming in. I have not read through AB 368. So I'll add that to my notes to review and bring it towards our committee to look at and how we can either testify or, you know, on behalf of it. Because that is a lot of the work that we're doing is testifying on behalf of many bills that come through. And so we will, I'll add that to that list. But I think from what you're saying, just in that piece, it sounds like it's definitely something that we would want to support because there are other bills that come out that may not be necessarily a wildfire type of bill, but it does support the goals of what we would want to establish that would be a benefit if wildfires came through as well.
And my last question was, is Woodside Fire Protection District doing anything or starting to do something about wildfire risk reduction buffer areas? Sort of looking at, you know, I look at Portola Valley, but really the bigger risks in many cases are kind of all the wildlands that surround us. And so it's critical that we provide some buffers that that areas are trimmed of dead brush and dead trees and whatnot, just to prevent a wildfire that might develop up in the hills to come whooshing into town. It would be stopped. So is there any program at Woodside Fire to, to start looking at that and start working with the big landowners that's around Portola Valley to provide greater protection to the town?
So two things on that. The first, that was one of the goals that I was looking at for this year was to create fuel breaks throughout our district in our most vulnerable areas that would affect our district. And a lot of those fuel breaks would go through a lot of private properties. So it was talking or private landowners. And it was to look at those areas and have conversations with those landowners on how we can work together on establishing these fuel breaks. The second thing, because of the cost of that it may entail, we did do a visit over at, in Marin on, actually this past Monday. Marin Wildfire Authority passed due measure C that Marin County passed. We went to actually look at the measure C program and what they were able to accomplish and implement to have an understanding what they've established, what they've done and some of their initiatives through the program. And it was a very educational and way of, I don't know if we can accomplish that as a county. We had county representatives that did attend the, the meeting and presentation as well. But for me, it was more as how, how can I utilize this information to bring it back into the district? So it gave me different ways to be able to approach this. And funding is always one of the biggest things and grants is a biggest thing. But it is something that I am very much focused on for this year to see how we're going to accomplish this. Because it's not, you know, we, we say a lot with homeowner responsibility, but there is more than just that district wide that we need to accomplish. And if Woodside Fire is able to either assist or even provide at least some of the funding to assist in getting this done, that is one of my biggest goals to be focused on.
Thank you.
Mary, can you have a question?
So thank you, Fire Marshal. I appreciate that you've come and your presentation. I do have a couple of questions. Portola Valley has, is missing three neighborhoods for firewise communities. Is that hurting us at all for grants?
It isn't. No, not currently at this point. I am working on right now a, a map district wide that's going to show percentages as to how many firewise communities we have district wide, but then breaking it down for Portola Valley and Woodside so we can have actual accurate numbers percentage wise. And with that, I would, I'm hoping that we can utilize that for increased grant writing. But I don't think that's something that's hurting us at this point. I know historically, it's been said because of the median of whether it's income or because of property values that has disqualified us from grants in the past. I just don't see that being a factor now. I've seen a lot of other areas very similar to us getting grants. So I'm working on trying to get some of those grants to bring it to Portola Valley to support the residents and what they're trying to accomplish. So it is something that I'm actively looking at. But it would certainly help. If we could get more firewise communities, I'm not going to say, it would certainly help if we could get more in Portola Valley.
Great, okay. We, and if people are interested, because my understanding is that we've had a shortage of people to organize firewise communities. Should they reach out to you? Should they reach out to Chip? Who should they reach out, be reaching out to?
They can re, they can reach out to both. A chip is a great help. I don't want to, there's also a few other people that have, that if you reach out to the fire department, we can put you in contact with certain individuals that have already championed their communities for years. And they said that they would be more than happy to assist other people who are looking to try to establish and how they, how they accomplished it and what they can do. So as mentors, if you will, to develop their firewise. So either way, we will support both.
And just remind me, so thank you for that. Thank you. Firewise Community does help with fire insuring, insurance, right, for residents?
It, I will say I've seen both. I've seen some insurance companies, I will, it has helped. For some homes that are in a firewise community, I've seen that it didn't make a difference. But I have seen homes in a firewise community that whether they were able to keep their insurance or get a discount has happened for both. Unfortunately, at this current time, there has been too many variables I have seen with insurances that it's not consistent. And it's something we keep working on with the state of California with insurance of how can we keep incentivizing people to do what needs to be done when we can't get support from insurance companies saying, yes, if people are doing this, we will definitely support them. They just won't give us that definite word. It's always a, as long as they're doing these things and we go out and we see them, they may, it's always a may. So, but I will say, for anybody who's appealed the process, they have maintained their insurance and the fire department will always support the homeowner on how we can help them maintain their insurance. So please let us know. I've written a lot of letters. We've done a lot of inspections at properties to help homeowners maintain their insurances.
Thank you. Next question. Do, does Woodside Fire have an opinion on the community insurance model?
Not really. It's, no, we don't. We don't really have a standing on that.
Okay. And last question. Woodside, it's my understanding that the town of Woodside gives, I think it's 3,500 per household to help with vegetation management?
So they have a matching fund program and it's 3,000 and it's available to all residents. So it's up to a total of 3,000 of whatever, so it's 50% of whatever they spend up to a total of 3,000. And that's available to all residents. The program requires the fire department to do a home assessment. We identify issues, then the homeowner can choose what issues they want to work on correcting. And that's how they get that part of their, for their program.
And because Portola Valley is not in a position right now to offer that program, would the Woodside Fire Protection District ever consider doing something along those lines potentially?
We've looked at that, but we just don't have that in the budget to be able to say for every residence. We've looked at ways of how we can, you know, is it for qualified people? But that's really not fair for people qualified versus people that don't. And so that's been a challenge. If anything, what more we're looking at is how we can still offer the service, but maybe at a reduced rate than which more, most contractors maybe would charge. So that's the legal, that's where I'm looking at legally with our attorney, how we can provide that kind of service instead for homeowners.
Great. Thank you so much, Marshal.
Thank you.
Kim, thank you. If people want to get in touch with you, it's info@woodsidefire.org?
Yes, please.
Great. Can you hang around until after the town manager report, which I think will be brief, just in case there's any public questions?
Of course.
Great. Thank you very much. All right. So Mark, hand it over to you.
He's got it there. Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Vice Mayor. Couple of quick things. First, for those who don't know, Mayor Hask goes out on a fundraising adventure for cancer research where she and 15 other people are climbing to the Mount Everest base camp, which will be back on the 27th. The horse fair is coming May 17th. This is brought to you by the Trails and Paths Committee of the town. And this is a horse fair. It's not one for you to bring your horse and it's not one sure to bring your dog. So don't do those, but the, it's May 17th, 10:30 to 1:30 at the town senate. It's really fun for the whole family, so kids ought to come. I'll leave it at that. There's lots of information out on that. There's flyers out on that and so on. April 24th, tomorrow night, in this same place will be our town hall for anybody in the community wants to come about the town revenues as we prepare for our budget for next year. It will be recorded, it will be available to watch and comment or whatever at that point. April 30th will be a special town council meeting on the expenditure side of the budget, which will come to a town hall on May 7th, four to six. And both of those meetings, four to six in here, again, around on video. And on the town manager search side, the community survey is online now. For those of you who want to fill out the survey, it's a one pager. May 6th, 5:00 to 6:00 PM will be a community Zoom conversation with the search team. And we'll give you more on that as that comes out. Thank you.
Is that it, Mark? Great. Okay. So now I'd like to open up to oral communications. So this can be any questions about either the two presentations or things that are not on tonight's agenda. So I have a question, a hand in the back. Do you want to come forward? And this is not, like, this isn't on the baseball field, right? Oh, this is Rita. Of course, you, you understand the procedures. Thank you. Welcome, Rita.
Thank you, Rita Comas. Listened to a couple of meetings lately and please monitor each other on being close to the mic so the people on Zoom can actually hear you. There's, it was really hard at moments during the finance meeting yesterday and, and we're discussing, we're always discussing important things, but these, it's been, it's been really hard. And if we could know how many people are actually online participating in this meeting. So several people in the town are very interested. And I've asked before, but if we could please get a box, similar to when everything was shut down and we couldn't go into the town hall, but have a box outside with a lock or a combination. So if people needed to pick something up or drop something off for the town hall, that would be really helpful since it's not open and you can bang all you want and nobody's there to answer the door. And if someone does answer the door, it makes you feel like you're, makes you feel bad. And should not feel bad when we as residents are trying to do town business. And there were two very cute, attractive children that had to leave. It was probably past their dinnertime and their bedtime. But it's for two items that are, are one of the items that is on the consent calendar, items D and E. So I, it's still in the consent calendar. Who do I give these to? And let me know when we're on for the consent agenda item. Those particular items are on the consent agenda? Correct. For Dorothy Ford Field. And those items are currently on the consent agenda. And so those kids are asking and I'm asking. Everyone's asking. Thank you.
Sorry. Thank you for those suggestions. Let me just answer the question. There's about 25 to 30 people in the schoolhouse, a rough count. And there are 20, 28 attendees online. So let me start, is there anybody else in the schoolhouse that wants to speak on something that's not on the agenda? Okay. So let me move to the people online. So the first person is Karen, no last name. You could unmute yourself. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, this is Karen Botra. I just wanted, this is kind of a technical thing, but I did want to speak to Dawn in particular about the one-and-a-half-inch pipe. I actually wrote a letter to the CUPC about 10 years ago, because I think the excessive charge is really excessive, particularly here in Portola Valley, where we put in these large pipes really just for fire sprinklers. And I can see there's likely a correlation between the size of your pipe and the amount of water usage, but I'm going to give you some actual facts. I looked up when you were talking, because I didn't think so was going to come up. So in August of last year, only $107 of my 348 charge was for water, but in January, I only had $7 of water, and I had a $258 bill. So if you think a $222 a month, which adds up to $2664 a year, isn't excessive just to be able to protect the home, it's really an issue. And I'm really conservative of the water. Do not do a lot of irrigation, so I'd be more than happy to contact you online, but this is probably going to be a growing issue as we make our homes more fire assistance. Thank you.
So Karen, you can reach out to me, and I can connect you with Dawn. So Dawn, we usually just take comments. I just wanted to make sure you could hear them. You don't have to respond to him now, but I will connect you with Karen.
Okay.
All right. Next on the list is the number ending in 7562. I'm assuming that's probably Caroline. Welcome, Caroline. You need to unmute?
Great. Thank you. Yes, I was just confirmed that I'm unmuted. Thank you, Karen. It's a problem in all over Portola Valley. People came out to town council in 2018 when Calwater tried to get identification in case of wildfire, and then we exposed all the issues, including no water, no fire hydrants. Kim is the first one who explained that the water in the fire hydrants is not for extinguishing fires, wildfires. Of course, with open space and so much nature, we all think that land should be protected as well. Yes, that's why we want to make sure that the trails, that Public Works actually maintains our trails. If you know Portola Valley, there's many trails that should be maintained because they're adjacent to our properties. Whatever we do, we are dependent on fire mitigation. This is the first time that I hear that we can actually have a private session to have the chipper program come to your house. I've never heard of that. We know we participate in the regular chipper programs. There's a lot of things that are nice on paper and nice on presentations, and I would like to have more detail how we can work with Portola Valley. I'm not interested in Marin County, and I apologize. I spend a lot of taxpayers' money, and it's time that this town council protects the rights and the protection and provides safety for Portola Valley. Thank you.
Thank you, Caroline. So I think, like, it's info at calwater.com. So I would say for the people who want to reach Dawn, that's the best way to reach her, and you can just put in the subject, you know, message for Dawn, and I know from personal experience that she'll respond. And then if you want to reach Woodside Fire, info@woodsidefire.org. All right. So the next one is Karen Askey. Welcome, Karen.
Hi, can you hear me?
We can.
Okay. I had a couple comments or questions for Kim, and I was hoping she could answer them, but it sounds like maybe not. First of all, thank you very much for your presentation on home hardening. You mentioned fuel, and you, in parentheses, you had vegetation, but my understanding that a huge piece of the fuel load is the, are the houses themselves or the structures. And I wondered if you could speak to building separation standards, which has been brought up, and obviously, we can't do anything with existing development, but what's going on with standards for new development, and if there's any comments about multifamily housing as Portola Valley moves forward with that? Thank you.
Thank you, Karen. So what I'd like to do for tonight is just have Kim take these comments, and then she can answer them. One of the things I'd really suggest is the website at Woodside Fire is great, and Kim's been doing a great job of continually adding more and more stuff to it. So that may be one place. And then the other is through info at Woodside Fire, you can reach her directly. Next person is Leslie. Welcome, Leslie.
Hi, all. My, my comment is much more pedestrian. I think Rita Comas read my mind. I'd like to ask that you guys do a little training on, on how to use the microphones and that. What I've seen over the last couple of days watching a couple of committee meetings is not that our equipment necessarily makes it hard to hear, but it says some people are really good at getting up close to the microphone and use it correctly, and others don't, and it becomes very hard to hear. For instance, Mr. Lindner made some comments, and I couldn't hear them tonight. Or there were some numbers mentioned, and it was really hard with my volume all the way up. So that's a very boring request for all of you who run these meetings, but if you could work with your teams a little bit on just getting up close and personal with the microphone, that would be great. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Leslie. Okay. I don't see any more hands up in, online. I don't see any more hands in the schoolhouse. So I'd like to close oral communications.
Can I just add one thing? For people who called in about downsizing their meter, the email to write is bgrequest@calwater.com. And that's Bear Gulch, so bgrequest@calwater.com. Thank you.
And I would add, they've been very responsive. All right. So now we're going to move on to the consent agenda. So normally, on the consent agenda, we take public comment at the beginning to decide which ones we're going to pull, then we pull it. But with the rest of the council's permission, what I'd like to do is I'd like to just poll 5D and basically take some comments on that directly, since we have a lot of people, and particularly, we have a lot of young people here that I appreciate their staying, that we could just move on that and then come back to the rest of the consent agenda. Is everybody comfortable with that? I know it's a little bit out of our normal process. Okay, great. Thank you. So what we're going to do then is I'm going to poll 5D. I'd like to do a little bit, I'm going to give you a couple minutes of reviewing the situation, just so everybody has the context when they're commenting. And then I'm going to ask Terrence to do a short staff report on some issues that we've talked about, and then I'm going to take public comment, questions from the council, then public comment, and then I'll bring it back to the council for discussion. So that's sort of the way the next step will go. So I just wanted, I mean, I know everybody can't sit through every council meeting, as interesting as these council meetings are. So I wanted to just give everybody a brief sort of history. As you all know, that as part of the housing element, Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space has been proposed as sort of what we call a last resort housing site. We defined a sunset provision so that we could work with HCD to find alternatives, and if we found alternatives, we were going to take Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space off the list. So we've basically created an alternative sites committee. They've been doing great work, looking at alternate sites. I think we have some very promising sites, so that's the good news. The bad news is HCD wants Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space zoned so for us to have a compliant housing element. The reason that's an issue for the council is without a compliant housing element, we're subject to builder's remedy. And builder's remedy allows builders an enormous amount of flexibility to basically move around a lot of the zoning that makes Portola Valley special. So to date, we haven't had any builder's remedy applications, but, you know, all it takes is a willing builder and land for sale. We could. So that's the dilemma that the council's dealing with, is we would like to get a certified housing element as quickly as possible. We also don't want to sacrifice Dorothy Ford Park and Open Space, nor do we want to sacrifice the baseball field. So at the last council meeting, we agreed on a compromise, which was to explicitly exclude the ball field, and then asked the planning director and the town manager to go to Sacramento to talk to HCD, because they've asked us not only to create the zoning, but to actually apply the zoning to the property. And so the compromise we proposed was to create the zoning, but not apply it to the property. We've obviously gotten a lot of public comment, and thank you. I read through 150 pages of public comment this afternoon. And I think that, you know, the overwhelming comment was that just saying you're going to protect the ball field isn't enough. Like, it doesn't feel like sufficient protection. So what I've asked is I've asked the planning director to, and our council, to basically go back and look at the last meeting and get the council's intent, because the way this works, and this is a technicality, but when you have a first reading, when you have a second reading, you cannot make substantial changes. Like, that's just the way the laws are. So we have a choice. We can either restart this process and be subject to builder's remedy for longer, or we could make some small modifications to the wording that are consistent with the last council meeting we had and the sense of the council. So that's what I'm going to ask for tonight, is I'm going to ask Terrence to basically give the council a suggested rewording of what's there that I think may address many of the concerns they've heard. The council will then ask questions of Terrence, and at that point, I'll open it up to public comment, and anyone here is welcome to then come up to the podium and make your comments. So that's, that's sort of how it would go next. So Terrence, please.
Thank you, Mr. Vice Mayor. And I'll be very brief. You provided an excellent summary. The, as you indicated, at the last...
And just so, just so we're going to try to, we're going to try to follow the suggestions we heard?
I'm going to try to almost swallow it.
Yeah, well, you can sort of hear yourself. You can kind of hear it echoing in your background. You know you're talking loud.
Okay, so, and I apologize for that. So the council's, from staff's perspective, we understand the council's intent was to, was to exclude the entirety of the softball or baseball field and the park and the associated parking area. So on, on page three of your, of your proposed ordinance, 25-452, sorry, 2025-452, a particular language has been added. So let me, let me read it now with, with, I'm sorry, this is what staff is recommending. The, a 2.4-acre portion of the Dorothy Ford Park site would be, which is included in Table 666 of the housing, sorry, 66 of the housing element, which shall include the deed restricted, deed restricted regulation, ball field, and associated parking area shall be developed as high-density housing, and that owner-occupied and rental multifamily uses are allowed by right for developments in which 20% or more of the units are affordable to low-income households on the Dorothy Ford Park site, and then the property identifiers given. So this is, this is, this clarification is to, is to further exclude areas that are, that are central to the, central to the, the baseball field, because the parking, parking is a, is an integral part of the use of any facility. So this is the language that staff is recommending you include to further narrow and, and make it clear that the, that no matter what happens, the, the ball fields are protected. So I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
Great. Thank you. And just to be clear, for the people who don't have the wording in front of them, that was a big paragraph. Basically, the word "regulation" is being added in front of "ball field," and the words "and associated parking area" are being added after. So that's, that's the sort of critical part of the larger paragraph. So it reads "regulation, ball field, and associated parking area." So are there any questions from the council for Terrence before we move?
Yeah. Was there a decision not to put the actual words "little league" in there? So deed-restricted regulation, little league, or regulation-sized little league ball field?
The thought was to be more expansive in case at some point the, the name changed or the use changed, but to, to protect the, the field under all circumstances. However, if town council wants to add that, that language, I think your council has to, has to opine on that, but I believe it would be, it would still be a non-substantive change.
And then the other question I had is, under the Planning Commission, whereas, on page two, this would, I'm wondering if this could also be changed, if necessary, as a non-substantive change. It says in the second, second paragraph there, the letters, this is about transmitting a letter to HCD. The letter should note that for administrative efficiency, it would be preferred to avoid upzoning Dorothy Ford Park, only to then, to turn, only, sorry, only to then need to turn around and downzone it in short order if a viable replacement site is found. I'm wondering if it, would it be better and more accurate to say if viable replacement, if a viable replacement site, in parentheses, "s" sites, is slash are found? If that would protect us a little more and give us more flexibility in terms of replacing Dorothy Ford Park with more than one site in Portola Valley?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to defer to the town attorney, but I believe that it doesn't seem, I don't, I don't see a great difference in meaning, and the idea of this section is to, is to report what the, what the Planning Commission did, did actually say. So this, this, this language came from the Planning Commission's actual resolution, I mean, sorry, motion that they made. So I'm not, I'm not, I don't see a huge difference, but I'm not, I'm not really comfortable in adjusting what was stated. And Catherine, can you opine on that as well?
Yes, be happy to. So the rule about not making substantive changes between the first reading and the second reading only applies to the ordinance text itself, so we don't have to worry about that piece. But I do want to flag what Terrence mentioned, which is this recital in the resolution is really just restating what the Planning Commission resolution said. So I don't want to reword anything that the Planning Commission included in its resolution.
Okay, thanks.
Mary, do you have questions?
The only one I wanted to point out was that we've, we have found viable replacements, and we, we could actually say we have found, instead of keeping on saying "should," which sounds like we got to keep doing the job. If we could just project that to HCD and, and move ahead with what we've already done, it would make a big difference.
So my suggestion is, I think the goal of reopening this was to open it in the narrowest possible way to basically address the comments from the public, which is on the ball field. Basically, the planning director and the town manager are going to see HCD tomorrow in person, so I think they can make that presentation through them.
I'm just encouraging that. And I, the other thing I'm uncomfortable with, and I think we all need to understand it, is why we're applying this 20% rule to the Dorothy Ford Park. I thought it was supposed to be affordable housing. I didn't realize it was only 20%.
Again, this is, this is, I'm happy to explain, but the, the zoning, the zoning district has this language in it. That's, that's why that's there. The, the actual zoning district and, and the state wanted to see, I'm sorry, this discussion is in the housing element, and the, and the state wanted to see the same discussion available, available in the zoning ordinance itself. It's really duplicative, but, but that's their intention. And, and that was, that was in the approved ordinance that, that the town council approved at your last meeting.
Any else, Mary?
Nope. That's it.
Ellen?
Thank you. Good evening. A couple of...
A couple of questions, because the word "regulation" concerns me, actually, because when you go and look at the Little League site, I'll read what it says. It says, "Distance from the back of home plate to the outfield fence is a local league option, but the following distances are recommended." Now, I did, so that key word is "recommended." It is not a regulation. Now, the president of Little League wrote me today, if she's here or listening, former president. She said that it's because of, because of the 200-foot size, it's not a regulation, but for them to have certain playing opportunities for the kids. So, the word "regulation" then, in our resolution, is of concern to me, right? Because there really isn't a regulation at the Little League level, right? And that's a nuance, but this is a legal definition. So, I needed to point that out. So, that's one question. I'm not sure if anyone here can answer my next question, and Terrence, I'm guessing you don't have the ball field experience. But what's our distance at Portola Valley Town Center, from the backfield to the fence? Does any, right, so, maybe? The playground, where is that fence? Oh, is the fence gone? So, okay, and some sort of distance, though? Approximate, doesn't it, right? Is it 200 feet? Do, like, do we have, a lot more than 200 feet?
No.
It's open?
It's open part.
Okay.
Exactly.
Right, yeah. Okay. And one other, this is a comment, because Vice Mayor Taylor already brought it up. Not only are we open to, to builder's remedy, we are one of four jurisdictions in San Mateo County that has not gotten a certified housing element. Pacifica was one of, is also one of the four. They just had a thousand-unit application come in for builder's remedy in a terrible site. But not only is it builder's remedy that's the problem, we could be sued for $100,000 a month, up to $600,000 a month, by the state, which would bankrupt the town.
Is there a question here?
I was following up on your builder's remedy comment.
Okay, but I was saying that is an intro, we're in questions now.
So, I needed, and let me just make sure, okay, yep, that's it for right now. Thank you.
Okay, great. Terrence, thank you. Thank you for that presentation. All right, so now, we're going to open it to public comment. Let me add a couple things. So, first of all, thank you all for being here. To the degree, to the degree you can, please be brief. We've got a lot of people here that I, that probably want to talk. And remember that the goal of your comments is to help the council understand what the issue is. So, you know, we just heard this question about, like, the regulation. So, if you want to comment on whether, you know, is, like, ball far, is, excuse me, is ballpark and associated parking area, would that be enough without the regulation? Like, does, because is, is it that we're trying to capture the parking, or is it we're trying to capture something else? So, as you give us your public comments, helping us understand where you stand on that would be helpful to us. All right, so let me start. I've got a couple of speaker cards here, so I'm going to start with those, but if you didn't fill out a speaker card, don't worry. When I get done with these, I'll just ask you to raise your hand, and then I'll call on you. Okay, well, so hang on, just, so, let me ask the people who did fill out the cards, because the, the fair part is that they filled out the cards. But if Susan Ford and Charlie Katz are willing to let the kids go first, sure, and if, is Charlie still here? Yeah, oh, Charlie's a kid, so. Okay, so, you know, so, great, that's awesome. Okay, so, yeah, so Charlie, you have a speaker card, and you're a kid, so you get to go first. Come on up. So, you're welcome, yeah, I mean, normally, we have you speak here, if you're comfortable there. Press the little button, pull the mic, mic down, and now, there you go, perfect.
Got it.
And then, stay close, as we've been told, we all have to talk really close to the mic.
Okay.
Swallow it, thank you.
Hi, my name is Charlie Katz. I'm a fourth-generation Portola Valley resident, and a current fourth grader at Corner Radera. My great-grandfather, Bob Katz, was one of the founders of Portola Valley. My grandfather, Andrew Katz, continues to live in the town, and has been a longtime volunteer in Portola Valley. I currently play for the hangover trucks and majors of Alpine Little League, and my dad and grandfather, like, my dad and grandfather before me. I get to play my games at my favorite baseball field in the world, Ford Field. Ford Field is irreplaceable, is the fun we have before, during, and after every game and practice. The games are really fun, but it's also really special. After the games, I get to eat dinner from the snack shack, and then play games in the outfield. Another really special thing about Ford Field is the memories you make from the start to end of your Alpine Little League experience. I ask that you please save the whole Little League field, suppose the parking lot, so that we can continue to have this great experience in this special field. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. So, so Charlie? Charlie, was this your first time speaking before the council? You did an excellent, excellent job, thank you. Okay, so, the next card I have, since I can't tell, they didn't tell me whether the kid or not, kid or not on there, and I might get this name, it's A-N-G-I, Angi? Are you willing to wait? Okay, great, so I'll just put you in this sort of delayed. All right, so then, are there other kids that want to speak? And again, you know, what I'm asking is, help the council understand the issues. What do you think about, you know, regulation versus just ballpark, and then, obviously, the parking we're already including? So, if you have comments that you would like to sort of add, and, and help us understand the issue better, please raise your hand. I'm going to do that when I do online. I mean, is there, are you in, I see, they got, yeah, that's fine, yeah. So, I'm just going to read what they wrote? Perfect, I can do that. So, yeah, go ahead, please, come up to the podium. Oh, yeah, no, no problem, that's, yeah, no, it's... And if, and if you can just tell us your name, first name is all we need.
My name is E.J. Sweeney. And I, and I play for Alpine Little League. When I was in Double A, I won, to win, win games, not just to win a championship, but because the championship was played on Ford Field. I was very excited to get to play on Ford, on Ford Field, that I had seen my older brothers play on. Thank you for your careful attention to saving Ford Field for all the kids to enjoy.
Thank you.
This is Mom, and I'm Jen Sweeney, I'm the one who emailed Helen today. So, I, I'm on the Alpine Board, I am a, the former president of Alpine Little League. So, to answer your request to try to clarify, I think it's important that it say the words "Little League" in the ordinance, and if we don't want to use the word "regulation," it could be this "Little League recommended field size," because it is truly important that the field have the dimensions that it has. And the reason being, if it doesn't, we can't play our majors games at Ford Field, which is our older division, and we don't have another alternative. So, you will be, we will be losing a key field that is used for the 10- to 12-year-old division. We also, the field has to be the, those regulations in order for us to host any district tournaments. Little League requires that the field have a 200-foot fence and those dimensions on the base paths in order to host a tournament. The tournaments are a huge community-building experience, the kids love it, the whole community comes out to support the kids in those tournaments. It's also a huge, it brings tons of people into the community to shop at the businesses and be here. So, that is how I would clarify. I would say "Little League recommended size for a baseball field." Truly thank you for including the parking lot, that is so key to us being able to use that field, so thank you for that. The other point I would just make, it still concerns me that the ordinance says 2.48 acres, because I'm pretty sure I heard at the last town council meeting, that when you exclude the Little League baseball field and the parking lot, there isn't 2.4 acres left. So, I'm a little concerned about the contradiction in the ordinance itself, and what that means for the future of the baseball field and the parking lot, so.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Right, are there any other kids or kids with parents, like, you know, parents get to ride for free with their kid, that would like to comment? Okay, so I don't see any hands. So, then, let me read the two comments from the kids who had to leave early, and then, I'm going to call on the two other people to give me speaker cards, and then, I'm going to go to people online. So, again, we really appreciate you guys coming out. So, the first one is from Bailey, and it says, "Please keep Ford Field, we love playing here." And the other is from Bowden, Bowen, and it says the same, "Please keep Ford Field, we love playing here." So, that's what we're working on tonight. All right, so then, let me go, Susan, I think you would be next, you were at the top of my list originally, so thank you for being patient.
Thanks for the opportunity to speak tonight. I want to thank the council first for all the time and effort you put into, for our, our town. I know everyone here is very grateful for that. So, we should all be heartened by the outpouring of support to maintain Dorothy Ford Park, and especially Ford Field, the beloved baseball field. The people here tonight can tell story after story about their experiences and the incredible impact that playing Little League has had on their child. And I actually could add to those stories, because my own son played Little League at Alpine, and learned from the coaches and the team members all about the game, and all about life. So, some of my most cherished memories are from that field, and I love every minute that I spent watching him play. But no one in this room can talk about the origins of Dorothy Ford Park like I can, and the intent of my late husband, Tom Ford, who named the park for his mother. So, it was before my time, it was in 1970, that Tom, who was a newly-minted commercial real estate broker, not only negotiated the sale of the seven acres from the real estate partnership that was named Hair Brewing, Kelly, to the town of Portola Valley, but he added a substantial amount of the $90,000, that was the selling price, which is hard to imagine. He added a lot of that money to that amount that was needed for the purchase. So, the intent of the gift and the plan specified by the town at the time was for the park to be an open space, for it to be a park in perpetuity. So, even though I wasn't around at the time, I know that he believed the town would honor this plan, as he told me the story nearly every time we passed the park, which was quite often. I could practically tell you the story, verbatim, from what he said every time. We would wonder together about whether our son Tommy would be a baseball player, and if he would have the chance to play at Ford Field. So, happily, Tommy did love baseball, and he did get to play at Ford Field, but sadly, Tom died before he could see him play. And I know he would have loved every minute of it, too. So, donor intent is not just a nice thing to know, a historical note from a different time. Donor intent is a promise, it's a covenant to honor. And the town just didn't make the promise to Tom. They made to keep the ball, the park and the ball field as it is. The town promised the citizens the very same thing. The town cannot go back on that promise. It's important, not just in this instance, but this has implications for other gifts that the town may want to pursue from its residents. So, it's a matter of trust, promises made, and promises kept. So, I hope you will honor the commitment your predecessors on the town, town council made back in the seventies, to not rezone these properties, and to continue to pursue other property. And let me in by saying something that I said at a similar meeting when the topic came up. Just because you can do something doesn't mean that you should do something. Yes, there was no deed restriction on put on the land, and maybe they didn't think they needed one. So, you can technically develop it, but it doesn't mean that it's the right thing to do. It's not the right thing to do. Again, thank you for the privilege of speaking, and thank you again for all the work that you do for the town.
Thank you for your comments. Okay, I'm not, so, A-N-G-I, how do you say your name? So, just to, okay, you know, everybody has to spell these things differently, and then I get confused, so, welcome.
Well, thank you. I know this is a difficult subject for all of us, and difficult to figure out, and I appreciate all of your efforts. But I'm speaking on behalf of not only my family, but also 10 other local families here in the, in the area, and who are in favor of this letter, which is about 40 people. So, obviously, we just are requesting that you please remove Ford Field rezoning ordinance from the consent agenda, as it deserves to be discussed openly with the community. Furthermore, please exclude the Little League baseball field and the parking lot from Ford Field, which it sounds like you are working on. It's just incomprehensible to me that we may risk losing this historic, beautiful, and iconic place in our town. For many decades, families and their Little League families have embraced, cherished, and loved this picturesque field. The town needs to stand up for us and push for another solution. We are begging you. The town needs to take charge and remember what's important: history, tradition, and community. Don't destroy this field of connection, pride, and belonging. My two boys have played on Ford Field for many, many years. My husband has coached many years on that field. I personally have enjoyed watching my sons win league championships on that field. The field has seen wins and loses, and tears of joy, and tears of defeat, but above all, has brought our families and community together. This field has connected us. Ford Field is an iconic town landmark that holds generations of fond family memories, sportsmanship, and just flat-out the love of the game. This field is part of our residents' athletic development and childhood. Please ensure that we do not destroy part of our community's childhood. Do not destroy this field and rob the future generations of its glory. Do not destroy the future childhood laughs, cries, victories, defeats, lessons, and learnings. Our family and local neighbors are begging the town of Portola, Portola Valley to fight for its community. It would be an absolute tragic loss for our sweet little town, and the generations of families who have played and are yet to play at Ford Field. Taking this field away is akin to stealing bases from future generations, and we're begging the town to stand up to the plate and fight for what's right. Please remove the Ford Field rezoning ordinance from the consent agenda, swing the bat, and win this for our community, win this for our kids, and win this for the future generations who will play on this iconic field, creating their own magical family and childhood memories. But thanks for listening, and thanks for your support.
Thank you for your comment, and the baseball analogies. I got a hand, I think it's Rita, I can't, you're far enough back there, I can see the hand, I don't, yeah, okay. Welcome?
Not just what I say, but let's look what the newspaper said in 1970. The Alpine Little League field is destined to become Portola Valley's second publicly-owned park. Negotiations are in their final stages, and the purchase should be completed by February, according to Mayor Eleanor Bushy. Little League has been using the field for several years through the generosity of the owner, Hair, Bera, and Kelly, and there are no present plans to move the young baseball players, according to the mayor. The town also owns a creekside strip of land on Upper Alpine Road, a gift from Mr. and Mrs. Anton Bovee, and has leased another section on Alpine, between Alpine Road and the creek, adjacent to the historic Alpine Beer Garden. The open space along Alpine Road fits into the town's plans for protecting the crew and retaining the rural quality of the main access to the town. The price of the seven-and-a-half-acre piece is $90,000, for which the town expects to pay cash from its accumulated open-space reserves and some other funds. Town Treasurer Ed Wells is at work on transferring funds in order to make the purpose, the purchase negotiations for the town, and were carried out by Councilman Milton Johnson with the help of Tom Ford, a local resident with broad experience in real estate development and sales. The property is bounded on the east side by Ladera Oaks Tennis and Swim Club, and the west by an easement to a historic toll road, now familiar as a trail to Stanford University's felt lake. Portola Valley Park, named for Dorothy Ford, and this is May 1971. Portola Valley's new mayor, Robert Anderson, photo's probably there, wielded his first gavel last week in a short meeting which adjourned at an all-time record of 9:15 p.m. Portola Valley has come up with a name for its first park, the Dorothy Ford Park, in honor of the mother of a generous supporter of open space in the town. A substantial contribution by Thomas Ford to enable the town to get more parks was announced by Councilman Eleanor Bushy and gratified, gratefully acknowledged by the council. "We are trying to encourage people to donate money for the acquisition of open space," Councilman Milton Johnson said. Mrs. Bushy also reported contributions to the open space fund totaling $1,395 from 17 residents of the Sequoias. The list of imaginative names for the park on Alpine Road, which was submitted by the children of the Portola Valley Schools, will be held for a future occasion. So it's not just what we say now. It's what the intent was in 1970 by the previous council. And here's a letter from Hair, Bearer, and Kelly.
So Rita, I'm going to have to ask you to close down.
My time is over. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for your comment. All right, is there anybody else in the room that would like to comment? Okay, so we'll go to you first. Please come up to the mic. Yeah, push the button. There you go. And then just tell us your first name at least.
My name is Craig Eckstein. I'm a lifelong resident. I was born and raised here since 1974. I actually played at Ford Field myself in the eighties. Great memories. Made a lot of friends there and was really a town unifier for everyone. You know, a place you saw your friends, got to spend a lot of time, see families. We all went to the snack shop. My kids now play at Ford Field. Another thing about it, when I played there, it was the best field around. We played La Entrauda, played Woodside Elm, other places. Ford Field, hands down, best field to play at, especially because it actually has a fence that you can hit a home run of. So really important to me, to all these people here, I think it has so much history. To take that away would be unfair to our town. There's already limited places for us to have, you know, sports and baseball fields are already overwhelmed with teams. So to take one more field away from the area would not only hurt people in Portola Valley, but just the area in general. And I think one of the things I want to clarify is you guys got to make sure you protect not just the parking lot and the field, but also there's a batting cage there, which I helped redo. There's bleachers. You need to give us a little bit of a buffer so that it's not just a field and a parking lot. We need a little bit of room around it so that we can actually witness the games and keep the batting cage. On a bigger note, though, one thing that I am disappointed about is that it feels like, and I've been saying this for the last five years or whatever long we've been dealing with this housing issue, is that the town seems to not be fighting the state. They're just agreeing and trying to mitigate the problems as best they can. There are a lot of other cities that are in the exact same situation as us, such as Pacifica, Woodside, Los Altos Hills. Why don't we reach out to them and pool our resources to go fight the state, who in my opinion is a bully to force stuff like this on a little town, that it will ruin the character of the town? And after all the fires that have happened in the last seven, eight years, makes absolutely no sense to begin with. This is not a high-density type area to live in. There's no jobs. There's no public transportation. We just saw the Pacific Palisades burn down. And it feels like our safety, our way of life, is being destroyed because the state has some magical number they make everyone have to reach. And I implore you to stand up to the state and talk to the other cities and towns just like us, which are hundreds out there. They're in the same dilemma. And pool your resources and push back. All I see in the news...
So I'm going to have to ask you to wrap it up.
All I see in the news now is lawsuit after lawsuit about what's being imposed now. Why don't we do the same thing? Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Chris. So Kristi, I've got a kid who's back. Are you okay letting them go first? Okay, so I'll take, I can see one guy. Is there one hand behind? So why don't you in the front row go, and then is there somebody, blue jacket? Okay, I got it.
Hi, my name is Luke.
You can pull the mic down a little bit, so it's, yes, there you go.
My name is Luke, and I played at Ford Field tonight. And the first thing my little brother said to me was, "When I'm old enough..." After the game, he can't wait to be old enough to play at Ford Field. Please protect Ford Field.
Thank you for your comment, Luke. I guess this is the big kid. I'll get to you next, Kristi.
Whoa, thank you. Speak into this directly. My name is Steve Erickson. I have lived in town for the last eight years. I appreciate the time that you've given us all today. So I am the 40-plus-year-old version of AJ, of Luca, of all of the kids that have talked today. I was fortunate enough to grow up in a town that had a ball field just like Ford Field. The memories that I have and the impact that it had on my childhood have lasted all of these years. I've never even played a game. I coach Alpine Little League, but I've never even played on Alpine Field with any of the kids that I coached. They're not old enough yet. But just like the kids here, that's the next step in the field of dreams moment that the whole Alpine Little League shares in common. So just like everybody else said here, would love for you guys to consider all of the comments that we've suggested. We appreciate it, and thank you for your time.
Great. Thank you for your comment, Steve. Kristi? Turn it on. Turn on the mic. Welcome.
I play softball. I have for 15 years in the town, and my kids played in the play area next to it. So it's been a part of our lives for a long time. Played in high school. My son also played at Alpine Field. So I'm concerned that, you know, we moved here because we drove down the road and said, there's softball, there's baseball, there's soccer. This is for us. We want to raise our kids here. So one thing I'm concerned about in the wording that you're doing in the note two is you say deed-restricted ball field. Well, first of all, the deed is going to be paid off at a later time, so does this sentence then go away? So you can, from what I heard from previous meetings, is you can pay off a deed ahead of time. So when we get financially sound, are we going to pay off the deed right away and start building? Or... So the word deed-restricted, I don't really like that in there. I mean, why don't you just say the Little League field and the parking lot and go with that? So because it's my understanding that the deed restriction loan is removed after 2030 or '31, please clarify the deed completion date if I'm wrong. The wording is critical. As of 2030-31, the Little League field will no longer be deed-restricted. So then what? So I think we really have to work on the wording of this to make it legal for us later in time. You know, five years, 10 years. So consider the terminology Little League field. When it's assumed that it's a Little League field, it will always be the dimensions that we need it to be, and it cannot be reduced to a ball field. I just can't even stand the word ball field because that can be softball, T-ball. It can be many, many different things. We're looking to maintain a Little League field. You've done that one. I'm wondering why the town council or the town didn't complete a subdivision map act to legally divide this parcel into three or four lots, and then we can put the zoning appropriately. So I'm not sure why that didn't happen, but most cities do that. Consider other locations for the 2.4 acres in town and submit 2.4 acres, one or more locations to HCD, and wait for the response. Be patient. They have to respond to us in 60 to 90 days. We can do this. Preserve the two historic trees with the riparian setbacks of Lost Trancos Creek. The roots of those two trees most likely expand to Lost Trancos Creek.
So Kristi, I'm going to have to ask you to close it up.
Okay. And Lost Trancos Creek flows into San Francisco Creek. So we live in a high-preservation town with scenic corridors and open rivers. So I do...
So Kristi, you're over your time. You're 30 seconds over.
All right. Thank you.
Is there anybody else in the schoolhouse? Thank you. Welcome.
Welcome. Thank you. And thank you guys for your time. JD Mumford here. I wasn't planning to speak, but I'll just say a couple of words. I love those trees right there. I have a picture in my office of me sitting under it. I was his age, nine years old. One of my favorite memories. So I'd say that when you look at this field and you look at the mapping of it, it's pretty... I can't comprehend how you can actually put housing into this whole element without impacting the field and effectively the parking lot, all the areas. You can get 2.5 roughly, you know, acres out of it. So I think you all need to go take a step back and relook at this entire, you know, problem in front of you. But, you know, with that, I'd just say you need to look at the entire property and, yeah, really consider options ahead of us. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Yeah, please.
Hi, I'm Dan McDonough, the new president of Alpine Little League. So I just, so one of the members of our league, Carolyn Chase, is a land use attorney, and she wrote some language, which might be useful. So I just want to, and she sent this letter in to you all, I think, yesterday. And so I think this might be language that we want to consider adopting. But she wrote, "Up to a 2.4-acre portion of the Dorothy Ford Park site APN, included in Table 6 of the 2023 to 2031 housing element, which shall exclude the existing deed-restricted Little League baseball field and the adjacent surface parking lot serving the baseball field, as shown in conceptual site plan on page 127 of the 2023 to 2031 housing element, shall be permitted to be developed as high-density housing, and the owner occupied and rental multifamily uses are allowed by right for housing developments in which 20% of the units are affordable to lower-income households on the specified portion of the Dorothy Ford Park site. Notwithstanding Municipal Code Section 18 dot 46 dot 60, the existing Little League parking lot serving the baseball field on the Dorothy Ford Field Park site shall be deemed to be non-conforming use, and no conditional use permit shall be required." This was written by a professional who, you know, obviously specializes in this, and I think it also does not deviate from what was originally agreed to. So this might be language we consider using, and I think you have all this in your email as well. So I just would like you to consider actually using the language written by a professional. Second thing is, you know, the league has some resources, and we're willing to help cover the cost of a survey and reparseling that site. So to the extent that's something that you're interested in doing, we're willing to contribute to that. Go ahead. Are you going to, do you have something you want to say?
No, no, no.
Could you repeat that part, last part? I couldn't quite understand what you were saying.
The league is willing to contribute if, for a survey and potentially reparseling that site to make it easier to, I guess, you know, split up the zoning. So if that's an option that you guys are looking at pursuing, we're willing to contribute.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you, Dan. All right, are there any other hands in the schoolhouse? All right, so seeing none, I'm going to move to online. So the first hand is Martin. Martin, welcome.
Yes, thank you. Martin Miller, 3350 Alpine Road. Near lifelong resident of Portola Valley, having moved here in 1972 from Burlingame, started sixth grade. I was represented at the March 19th meeting by Attorney Alan Berger, who presented my own research on the town's geologic map and the town's ground movement potential maps. The geologic map shows that the entire Dorothy Ford Open Space is alluvial soils, and the ground potential, ground movement potential map shows a very high probability of ground movement with only a moderate earthquake. Lost Trancos Creek, as was presented in the July 2022 onsite meeting by approximately 100 residents. A geologist pointed out that there's a sub fault, the San Andreas Fault there. A couple of months ago, I believe it was Rita, forgive me if I'm mispronouncing her name, last name, showed that the entire development area is within the high watermark of Lost Trancos Creek. So I've been proposing for, arguing for, you know, almost three years. This is not an economically feasible developmental site, and any rezoning of this 2.4 acres will severely negatively impact my own property value. And I just want to point out that if you do go through with rezoning before the San Mateo County Assessor is able to record the rezoning, you will all be defendants in a civil suit for negligence because it's moronic to have ever proposed that this be, site be developed. It's not developable, and it severely impacts me, my retirement, and of course, all of the Little League families that have eloquently presented their arguments. So I would stop worrying about the state bankrupting the town when in fact a single resident could quite possibly bankrupt the town. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. All right. Is there a question? Nan, you, so I'll take it from the schoolhouse, and then I've got one more hand online. Yeah, we're, I mean, but we're not, if you want to comment on the wording for this zoning, but we're not, we're not doing back and forth between different commentators. It's just comments. So Karen, Karen Askew, you're next.
Hi, all. Well, I really appreciated hearing the community speak up and the different ideas that are out there. I did submit written comments, and unfortunately, they were truncated in the published version. And Christine, if you can please make sure my full version goes into the minutes, that would be appreciated. And I would say, well, I have a couple of questions. One, I don't even really understand what this deed restriction is and if it is necessary to include in the language. And I would defer to the Little League professionals and the wording that was presented from them to make sure that we protect the field as much as possible. But I do, and I'm thrilled that Mark and Terrence are meeting with HCD tomorrow to go over all of this. And I would question if it's worth deciding tonight or waiting to see the HCD response to things and you vote in two weeks. I'm going to throw that out there because I realize we're subject to builder's remedy, but I really think maybe two weeks will yield a lot more information to make a good decision. The last thing that I've been asking about, and this assumes that HCD does not, says to us, "You have to do both your ordinance and rezone the site," which means we're stuck rezoning the seven-plus acres. This was the question I had in the letter. "Can legal counsel please provide a definitive answer? If we upzone all seven-plus acres of Dorothy Ford Park in open space with the intent of downzoning it, should we find alternative development sites? Are we obligated to replace the exact acreage or the number of development units planned? While we have two potential alternative sites, Village Square and Christ Church, they do not total seven-plus acres. We need to make sure that HCD..." We need to make sure that HCD won't require us to find seven plus acres versus the two point four acres included in the note to concurrently upzone if we downzone Ford Park. So, I would love to have Catherine speak to that. And that's about it. You've read my letter, so I won't go over that, but I do think it's important to specify the specifics of the field we have today and preserving it. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Carol. The next is three zero five six. Oh, disappeared. They gone, gone?
Actually, this is Dale Fow. You asked me to unmute. Can you hear me?
Uh, yeah, I guess I had a phone number before you, but they seem to have disappeared. So, hop on, Dale. Welcome.
Okay. Thanks, Greg. Three comments here. Number one, I think all of you know that I am aghast that you would even consider Dorothy Ford Park for this high density housing, and I was thrilled to have Susan, hear Susan Ford speak tonight. I think it's a huge disservice that this was never actually put into open space and is being considered. Number two, I don't know what the legal term for it is, but it's clearly cognitive, cognitive dissonance if you actually upzone two point four eight acres, knowing that there really isn't two point four eight acres available, knowing the ball field, the parking lot, and the setbacks are off limits. So, I, there's probably, it's probably illegal, and I think it's silly for you to go forward knowing that there aren't two point four eight acres. Number three, I love Karen's comment about just defer this for a couple of weeks until you get some guidance back from HCD. And number four, if you absolutely must do something tonight, please follow the recommendation of the professional from the Little League lawyer who gave you some great language for use. Thanks.
Thank you for your comments, Dale. Next is Nancy. Welcome, Nancy. You're muted.
Ah, there you go. Yes, um, I want to say something about, I don't think just the ball field and the parking lot should be in this consideration. That open space is really wonderful, and for those of us who had younger siblings there at the park watching their older siblings play, that open space was a great place to take them, distract them, teach them other things. That would be replaced not only by housing, but by a driveway, a driveway filled with more anxious and frustrated drivers who will endanger small children in that area. And I think that's something seriously to be considered. I've spent much time just in that space besides on the ball field, and I would urge our council members to stand up and not comply with the idiots in the state who think they know what's good for us. Stand up. Do not comply. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Nancy. Okay, it looks like three zero five six is back.
Yes, I'm back. It's Dana Green.
Hey, Dana, welcome.
Thank you. I think that the ball field is safe, and I hope that all of the baseball players, all the kids who are there tonight feel that. You know, I can't imagine that happening, and I would, but I would really like to get their support on the rest of the park. And the general plan, our Bible, our constitution in this town has an Alpine scenic road corridor. I don't know how it was ever, it ever happened that there was going to be development on that land. It, when you read the scenic corridor, there, it is what it is, and nothing should happen there. And the people of the, if there was a change to the general plan, the people of this town did not authorize a change to the general plan. And so, you know, until that happens, that land needs to remain safe. And yes, I've said over about the trees, the removal of those trees is, would be a criminal act. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Dana. All right. Anybody else online? Anybody else? Nan, did you want to say something? I don't know. I can't, did you put your hand, I can't, is your hand up? Yes, oh, yes, then please. Sorry, I just, I didn't see it. I couldn't quite tell if it was, like, you were just holding your hand here or you're going for big raises. Welcome.
Okay, thank you. I'll try to be brief. There are two separate issues here. One is the zoning or upzoning, and the other is the feasibility of developing the land geologically. The whole park is in a, the state's earthquake zone of special investigation for liquefaction, which means that it has to be, it has to have a geotechnical investigation to prove that it is not subject to liquefaction before anything can be built for human occupancy. It's a fact. Okay? So, even if you upzone, you may not get your, whatever number of units you want from it, baseball field or not. And personally, I will say, I would like to see you push very strongly other, other sites and push them at HCD and HCD except the other sites in lieu of Dorothy Ford Park. I don't think Dorothy Ford is the appropriate place to put Hyatt City Housing. Thank you.
Thank you, Nan, for your comment. All right. Looks like we have one more online. Randy? Welcome, Randy.
Thank you. I've spoken the last two meetings, and I'll say the same thing I said before. My grandfather was teammates with Lou Gehrig. My dad was teammates with Hank Aaron and Willie Mays. I was teammates with Randy Johnson and Mark McGuire, and my son is teammates with Aaron Judge. My son played at Ford Field, just like Eric Burns, John Goll, William Bartlett, and many others that have gone on to play collegiately and in professional baseball. I was in commercial real estate for forty years. I'm going to tell you, if you upzone this site, whether or not you decide, this committee says, I am not, no, 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 we're not going to take away the baseball field or the parking lot, we're not going to take it away. If you upzone it tonight or in the next two weeks, sorry, that was my phone, if you do that, the next council or the next council will. That baseball field is going away. And I just hope that you guys realize every community has some gems. I think Town Center is a gem in Portola Valley. We only have forty-five hundred people. I think Ford Field is a gem in Portola Valley. I think Rosati's is a gem in Portola Valley, and of course, the surroundings and the environment. But man, oh, man, don't you guys make a bad decision tonight or two weeks from now and get rid of a gem? Because once it's gone, it's gone. So, don't be one of those people that make a decision that, that changes our community going forward. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Randy. All right. We have a couple more. They're popped up, seven five two, seven five six two. I assume that's Caroline. You're still muted. Welcome, Caroline.
Good evening. Yeah, it's Caroline Vertonghen. I hope the town council and especially the two people who are going to represent this tomorrow at ACB understand how we appreciate this community, how we have worked hard to preserve this, and new town council members and new town staff could not ruin that. We're very serious about it. We will do everything to protect it. And so, I hope that Mr. Terrell and Mark Lindor will represent us in the way that we have tried to defend it. Remember, eighteen hundred people were against the document that was submitted to ACB and the town council, the previous town council did not want to change it. That was a big error. And we're very, no, we're not frustrated. We're beyond that. We're very mad, and so, we will take everything to protect it. So, be aware. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Caroline. Leslie, you're next.
Hi. So, hi, can you hear me?
We can. Welcome.
Super. Thank you. You know, in listening to all this, I think if I was going up to speak to HCD tomorrow, one of the things I might have in my back pocket is also the argument that after our meeting tonight, it appears that, that this property, if it's upzoned, could end up in a legal battlefield or could be entailed legally, which would make it really hard for someone to come in and develop or would make it harder. That would not achieve HCD's goals. If HCD's goals are more housing, we need to find something that won't create a massive lawsuit. It's just an argument I would use. Thanks so much. You guys are doing a really hard job. I appreciate everything the council is doing, and my vote would be not to upzone. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments, Leslie. All right. I don't see any other hands online, any other hands in the schoolhouse before I close public comment. Okay. With that, I am closing public comment on five D. So, let me bring it back to the council.
Can I maybe ask that? We had some questions, legal questions, so could we potentially get councils responses on the deed restriction and lawsuit situation potentially?
All right. If you want to ask those questions, you can, yes.
Okay. I will. So, council, could you speak to the deed restriction? We have not heard that aspect brought up before, and I'm very curious about, like, I did not realize that we would lose the deed restriction, and is it on the entire site or just the ball field portion? And is it in twenty thirty, thirty-one? What's the situation, please?
So, I have not reviewed the deed restriction. I understand this language was added at the last meeting based on public comment referring to the site as deed restricted. So, really, the intent here is to protect the ball field, and so, I think this really is a matter of semantics. The, I did check the housing element discussion of this site. This is on page one twenty-seven of the housing element. There's a schematic. There's some description of the baseball field as being a Little League field, but there is no reference to deed restriction. So, if this is, if this is a concern to the council, I don't see any downside to striking the word deed restriction, deed restricted, unless Terrence disagrees, but I don't think this is critical to, you know, specifying the location of the ball field.
Thank you. Could I also get clarification on the last comment about if there were, I mean, I'm assuming we will get lawsuits along the way because of our history, so could you maybe speak to that situation?
Yeah, I guess I would say, and this is a bit anecdotal, but I've been involved with a number of city clients that have been sued over their housing elements, and it doesn't seem persuasive to HCD that you're going to get sued. They seem to treat everyone equally regardless of the threat of litigation.
Thank you. Okay.
You have other comments?
I do have other comments, but.
This is it? I mean, we're in comments section, so.
So, first of all, I appreciate everyone coming. This is democracy, right? Being able to have, being able to speak up and speak your mind, and I appreciate that. Who's not here tonight, one I want to point out, are the environmentalists, for instance, who have put a setback on the creek a hundred feet back from the bank. General plan, as Dana said, seventy-five feet. So, that's constrained our site tremendously, right? The other thing that people, that you're not hearing, like Bicycle Pedestrian Safety Transportation Committee, thank you, I always have to think about these, my, the acronyms for our committee, they've been talking a lot about parking, and a lot of people have been talking about parking in town repeatedly. And I said this from the dais two weeks ago, and I will say it again, like, we need parking management in town because right now, for instance, our youth sports organizations to Alpine Field, not Alpine Field, excuse me, Zots Field, it is blocked because of Alpine Inn parking situation. There's also fire hazards there. We also have fire hazards at Willowbrook and Alpine Road with parking, and we have parking issues with Portola and right by the Sequoias for the parking in the Windy Hill and then during PB Palooza. And the reason I'm bringing all of this up is parking is an issue across town right now. So, I am hesitant to block the parking at the Little League field. I support, I absolutely support saving the Little League field. I think youth sports organizations are critical to kids and well-being and health and mental well-being, and I appreciate this Little League president coming in and saying that they might be able to help with a survey because the town does not have the money for a survey right now, unfortunately. Like, we just don't. It would, so, the other thing that I would note is that our staff, you know, for safety reasons, like, our staff can't afford to live in town, right? So, and morally and ethically, the people who are keeping our lights on, you know, to have the town work for you, you know, like, people are driving in from Monterey every day, right? People are driving in, I mean, I spoke to a colleague at work today who flew in from Palm Springs this morning. She got up at three in the morning to get to work, right? So, we desperately, desperately need housing. We absolutely need housing in this area. So, so respectfully, you know, I'm not voting to protect the parking lot. We need to do some usage around that. I talked, maybe it's the person who spoke before who, like, was annoyed with me, but last time when I talked about parking management, but we, you know, we're going to need to start figuring out how to incentivize carpooling and biking and walking and those kind of things, right? So, I respectfully, I'm not going to support it, and I know you guys want your parking, and I get it when you are hauling heavy kid equipment and it's a pain in the ass, right?
Hey, hey, excuse, hey.
Okay.
So, this, I'm sorry, I've closed public comments, so I do need, listen, we've heard the public. I realize this is sensitive issue, but, no, you don't, that you had your comment, this is a decision of the council, and if you interrupt the council, no, no, no. So, look, I know, I'm sorry. I'm very appreciative of all the comments that we've gotten, but if you interrupt our deliberations now, you are putting yourself in a negative light, and you're actually putting your position in negative light. So, I just ask right now that you let the council deliberate. The reason we are elected is to discuss this stuff and make decisions. So, you can agree or disagree with council members, but you need to let the council do this deliberation. So, please do not interrupt. Thank you.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. So, and I'm just one vote, right? We've got four other people here who might disagree with me. So, I'm the starting off. I'm the, you know, what are. So I'm the starting off, I'm the, you know, what do they call the first hitter? I'm sorry, I didn't play baseball. Hit off batter, thank you. Lead off batter. So, um, so I absolutely support protecting the field, but not the parking. We're gonna need to figure out, you know, we might have to use it in different ways. So that's where my stance is, I think. So, thank you.
Okay, thank you Helen. Who would like to go next? Mary? Turn on your mic.
I have a question for council. What, did we ever get through accepting the consent agenda? So we haven't done that, we haven't done that.
All we've done, we're working on five D.
Yeah, we're in particularly bad shape because we, but we haven't even talked about E. So I, I want to ask the question about E, to what extent?
Wait, 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 so we're doing five D, you can only discuss five D. We will come back to the consent agenda.
I just want you to know that I'm not, I'm not, I, I would agree with Karen Batra, I mean Karen Askew that it is premature for us to okay five D at this point for a number of reasons. I, for whatever reason, it, it's been hard to get the message across that we have successfully found other alternate sites, that everybody on the council agrees we need to have multifamily housing. We need to authorize the multifamily housing and go ahead with that. But putting Dorothy Ford open space on the chopping block at this point for twenty percent affordable housing is not acceptable to me. And I made that clear. I, I totally agree with, with Helen's point about the environmentalists aren't here for whatever reason. Nobody's really talking about those trees, which are what make that, that, that field magic. And I appreciate Nan's comments a great deal, that this was never a viable alternative and we knew it. We've known it for six years, that this was not a viable alternative and we've basically been wasting a lot of time on this, on this, which I realize is part of my duty to, to do this. But I, I can't author, I can't vote for the okaying of, of D at this time. And, and I guess we'll get around to talking about the consent agenda because there's also an E.
Yes, we, we will. Let's finish D first, so, all right. Rebecca?
Okay. So I, I support changing the language of the ordinance to reflect, I guess, the, the, I'm trying to look at the two different languages that I have in front of me, both the parent, the Little League parent and the language that the staff put together as well as the language that is recommended by the Little League former president. So, I mean, note two, doesn't rezone, is not the step that is needed to rezone the entire property. It's, it's just a note that can, that we are attempting to conform with the request by HCD about, about our housing element. So, um, I mean, it, it essentially addresses this two point four acre and as I said in the last town council meeting, that number is, was invented by a consultant because it just so happens two point four eight times twenty equals fifty. So already we're starting with sort of a weird number. But, but the note says a two point four acre portion of the park site shall, essentially shall exclude the, and this is the words I'm hearing, the Little League recommended size baseball field and associated parking area, et cetera, et cetera. So I don't know if that will be adequate for everyone. When I look at the, the information the lawyer put together, it's quite a bit longer. She wants us to be more specific about the actual table, table six dash six of the twenty-three to twenty thirty-one housing element. I'm fine with putting all that in to be more specific, but I, you know, and she refers to the conceptual plan on page one twenty-seven. I'm fine with putting that in as well to be even more specific, to protect that area. Where I have more concerns is the last sentence that's in there because I'm not clear on what that's meant to do. So maybe our town attorney could address that notwithstanding municipal code section eighteen point four, six point zero, six, zero, the existing Little League baseball field and adjacent surface parking lots serving the baseball field on the Dorothy Ford Park site shall not be deemed to be non-conforming use and no conditional use permit shall be required. I'm not sure what that means, required for what?
Yes, so this is in reference to a general rule that when you rezone a property, let's say you have a residential parcel and the town rezones it to be a commercial parcel, but there's a house on that, a residential unit on that, on that parcel and now it's in a commercial zone that's generally referred to as a non-conforming use. And there are special rules around non-conforming uses and this section referenced in the, the recommended language, this muni code section eighteen point four, six point oh, six, oh, is all about non-conforming uses and how those are permitted. If, if, let's say I own that, let's say I own a home there and I want to, I want to remodel it and turn it into a two-story home, well, I'm on a commercial zone, so is that allowed? And there's special rules around there. So anyway, that's what that means. I guess I, my perspective is we don't actually need to worry about non-conforming uses because we're not rezoning the parcel. That was the council decision at the last meeting. I am a little, I, I'm not necessarily opposed to that language. I think it's, I think it's factually correct. If the council wants to specify this, my suggestion would be to put it in a whereas clause in the recitals, put it, you know, the council could put a recital just to make it uber clear. We're not creating any non-conforming uses here. I don't think it's necessary, but I think that's an option. And then we don't have the problem of we're making substantive alterations. This is already, the, the language here is already quite a bit more, you know, robust, I guess, than the staff recommendation. I do still think, with the exception of the last sentence, it really is within the spirit of what the council discussed and intended. But that last sentence, I guess, I'm not opposed to it factually, but my, my recommendation would be to put it in a recital.
So are you saying that we're allowed, we would be allowed to put a whereas, add an whereas to this document without?
Yes, that does not trigger any second readings. It's just background material. There's no, there's no requirement about the person's second reading for the recitals.
And then can you, can you and Terrence address a couple little tiny words that were added by the lawyer? The first word is up, up to a two point four eight acre portion. Does that cause us issues with our housing element? And then the second question I have is which shall exclude the existing? And so the word existing, does that create any issues for the town? Terrence, do you want to take a stab at either one of those?
Yes, I can answer the first one quite, quite straightforward. It is not, the, the housing element says two point four acres, so up does not, would not work.
Okay, thank you.
So, and the other issue, I think I'll leave it to you.
Yeah, I was just gonna pull up the, the page of the housing element, which is page one hundred and twenty-seven and this is what we're essentially trying to sync up with. I think it actually might say, oh yeah, it does say existing baseball field in our housing element. So I think that would be, would be consistent to just say that again in the note.
And your recommendation was to just remove the deed restricted portion of the language, that it's not necessary?
Correct. So then it would just say which shall exclude the Little League baseball field or however you want to wordsmith it, but yeah, we don't need to say the.
Deed restricted.
Deed restricted portion. We could say, I'm sorry, exclude the existing baseball field or ball field or Little League field, whatever is most appropriate.
Okay, so from the lawyer's version, we still, I feel, need to put in there which shall exclude the existing Little League recommended size baseball field, right? That's kind of what I'm hearing. Does that?
Can I ask you a question of your, I mean, is just saying the existing Little League baseball field? I mean, it seems like that by definition gives you a size. I mean, it's not gonna let them make it bigger, but it's not gonna say, somebody doesn't get to come and say, oh, well, we thought a Little League field was only fifty feet, because it's the existing one, which it's whatever the size of it is. So I mean, I, I don't know, do you, would you feel comfortable with just keeping existing? Like, that seems like a pretty strong restriction by saying existing. Then we get out of, like, oh, it could be some future thing. It's like, it is what it is.
Yeah, I mean, that would be fine. I just want to, you know, it's this legal language, so we want to make sure we're very careful on that. And then, just addressing the parking issue, so to Helen's concern, we're not rezoning tonight, we're just creating this note. The note is not about the uses so much of the parking lot. It's just a matter of clarifying that the two point four acre portion that we've committed to in the housing element for housing doesn't include the, the ball field or the existing Little League ball field or the parking lot for the housing development. So I don't see it as an issue in terms of our current use of the parking lot, future kind of uses that we might need for the parking lot. I don't see that as, as an issue for tonight, for this particular note and for defining where the two point four eight acre is. So, and I know that was your, your concern is that we're totally limiting us for future, but in my, in my reading of this, it's really about defining where that two point four eight acre is.
Can I ask a question about that, of staff? What I'm concerned about is, for instance, if we need, if there is housing built there, which, you know, we don't want, but we're trying to hold off, you know, we don't think it's an appropriate site for necessarily for housing, but in case it ends up getting built and the housing would need parking, that we then could potentially do some sort of shared use with the Little League park if needed. Because otherwise, then you're paving over more area of an open space to provide parking. That's what I'm worried about.
Well, I would say that the two point four acres is, was never meant to include the parking lot. Was never meant, the parking lot was never meant to be shared with that housing development, even though it was completely unrealistic. But the two point four acres would never include, could never include, was not meant to include the parking.
I actually think it was and that was, that's what I'd like to ask Terrence, please. If you could, I think it was supposed to, like, I think there's, so please clarify, where was parking supposed to go on this site with, with the housing?
Sure, um, the, it's clear from the housing element and particularly from the graphic included that the parking area for the Little League field was not to be part of the housing site.
Thank you.
So, you know, pictures worth, worth more than a thousand words, but, so in this case, it's very clear. It's very clear that it's not included.
Yeah, I, I think we've seen, seen the pictures.
Okay, thank you. Okay, it's been a long time since I looked at that, so thank you for that reminder.
So the, the next question I have is actually for interim town manager Mark Linder. So as we talk about the idea of whether we move forward with this tonight and, and just get this new language in here and get it approved, does it give you a better position to have this approved when you go to speak with HCD tomorrow? Or does you think it's just sort of not, it won't make a major impact on our, our position?
It'll be better if it's approved.
Thank you, okay. And then I just kind of wanted to do a couple of ad lib, I don't know, ad lib's not the right word, but just some personal comments about this whole situation, just for everybody's knowledge. So the ball field, the Little League ball field at Ford, the Ford Field in the Ford property was never at risk. It was never on the chopping block. There was never, ever, ever any plan to put housing on that ball field. And I'm somewhat sorry that everybody got upset and riled up and somehow was led to believe that our housing element even suggested that there was gonna be housing put on the ball field. It was never, ever, ever considered. There was never any consideration of eliminating that ball field, zero. So I'm not entirely sure who kind of led people to believe that it was gonna be eliminated because it was never, ever gonna be eliminated. And of course, it concerns me about the misinformation that flows around in our town and gets people all upset and riled up and they yell at council members and they threaten council members and all this stuff over something that just wasn't true. What is, I do want to say, however, that I appreciate very much that there are so many people that are concerned about Portola Valley, that love our town, that appreciate all of the privileges that we are, that we have here with our open space, with our parks, that they're willing to come out late at night to talk, little kids, wonderful little kids that got to experience local government. I, I think that's absolutely fantastic and I'm really appreciative of that. But I really wish that we had just as much energy in our town towards two things, supporting other sites to build affordable housing, not at Ford Park, but somewhere else, other places in town, that we have that energy. And number two, actually having people put, I mean, you've, you've, you've said that you were willing to actually donate, well, having people actually put their money where their mouth is and donate to our affordable housing fund so that we can build housing, affordable housing, so that families can live in Portola Valley, so that we can have children that will continue to be able to play baseball and softball and Little League at Ford Field. Because I don't know if people have noticed, but our school district is dropping children by the minute. When my kids were in school fifteen, twenty years ago, there were two hundred and fifty more kids than there are today in the school district. You know, back in the seventies and eighties, there was twice as many kids. And why do we not have children anymore in Portola Valley? Because families cannot live here, because we do not have a wide enough variety of home types in Portola Valley that a wider variety of people can live here. Our seniors who live in town, who want to downsize, have no place that they can move in Portola Valley that's smaller than what they live in now. And they don't want to leave Portola Valley. They've been here for fifty, sixty years. They want to stay in the community. They cannot leave because we don't have smaller homes for them to live in. So we all need to, as a community, come together and figure out what, you know, how we can accommodate this, how we can welcome more families, how we can have our teachers and our, our, the baggers and our employees in town be able to live in our towns, that we have a sustainable town, that we have a sustainable school district, et cetera. So I would really welcome having people support our ability to build affordable housing. And that means we need dollars. We need, the churches are both interested in building affordable homes. We need as a town to match part of their expenses to build those homes. So if you want to support something, support our affordable housing fund or help us set up an investment B Corp.
Hey Rebecca, can I bring this back to the zoning ordinance?
Yes, yes.
Thank you.
But I mean, it comes to the same point because it's not just the zoning ordinance. It's the reality that Ford Park, as we have all seen, will not be able to accommodate the housing that has been put there in our housing element. We have got to find some other place for those very low income housing. Because it's gonna impact, even, even though Ford, Ford Field itself has never been at risk, having housing next door would impact the field. The parking would be impacted. You know, we've already seen that, that a lot of the studies that were done to, to, to put the housing on Ford Park were not accurate. So, I mean, it all, all ties together. If we want to continue to maintain our Ford, our Ford Field and have parking for the children and parking for families to come there, we also need to protect Ford Park. And the only way to do that is to raise money. And I'm talking about, you know, And I'm talking about, you know, tens, $50 million is really what we need in a housing fund, if the town wants to be able to, I'll be there in a sec, wants to be able to really define and build what we need to build in town. So I just want to quickly give a few facts, because one of the things that annoys me the most are misinformation that runs around. So, the Ford property is 7.55 acres. The area that does not include the park, the field and the parking lot is actually 4.9 acres. And people are very confused about the difference between buildable land and acreage. So, out of the 4.9 acres, we have obviously 2.4 acres that does not include the entire area of the field and the parking lot. So there's no problem with 2.48 acres and finding it on the property. The problem is the buildable land. There isn't 2.48 acres of buildable land, there's actually only at most 1.1 acres. So, just to be aware, this is another reason why it's going to be very difficult to build there, and why we need all of your support for us to develop other locations. And then, I just want to caution everyone that whether we move forward or not tonight with this amendment to the language, we're still at the mercy of HCD, and if they reject it, then we need to move forward with rezoning other properties. And, you know, we need to try to do as much as possible not to rezone Ford Park, but we need everybody's support for the other properties. So, I think that's, I'm...
So, no, no, so, please, I've closed public comment, I know this is frustrating. It's, yeah, but, no, yeah, so, this is not the time. We're, I mean, I, thank you, I mean, I appreciate that, but we're focused on the zoning ordinance, and you're welcome to reach out, she's, you know, rflinn@portolavalley.net, but I'd like to get us back to the zoning ordinance. So Rebecca, are your comments done?
I think so, yeah.
Okay, thank you. All right, if you guys can do me a favor, excuse me, I need you guys not to talk while we're trying to debate. So, let me just second Rebecca's, supporting affordable housing is an important part of what we need to do here. This is a complicated issue, this has been going on for three years, like, this is not just a new thing that's popped up. This started when I was planning commissioner, and we came up with the sunrise provision to protect Dorothy Ford Park and open space. So I think it's clear that local government has no interest in developing, but we also want to not be subject to builder's remedy, which is something that is going to impact all the residents in the town. So this is a tough issue, and it's continued to be difficult to deal with. I'm in favor of moving forward with the zoning ordinance with the changes, like, I would remove the deed restricted, and I would add existing little league ball field. I think that that would cover what we're trying, and then the associated parking, and the associated parking area. I think the question here is, we need to give Mark and Terrence something to go to HCD, so they can say, we see you're making good faith on this, and that you're moving ahead with these other options. And the compromise we made at the last meeting was that we're not actually zoning the property, which means we're not zoning the ball field and we're not zoning the oak trees. All we're doing is creating a zoning ordinance. The compromise was then to send Mark and Terrence to Sacramento, which they're going tomorrow, to meet with them and say, here are the reasons that we don't want to zone this area, we think we have other options, and we want you to certify our housing without us actually zoning the land while we work on these other options, which I believe HCD is going to see as much more realistic and housing options that they're going to be more in favor of. So, I continue to take the position that we need to move this forward, we need to get HCD to work with us on this and not be, oh, you guys are stiffing us, and then we have all the, it's the YIMBYs, right, that potentially want to sue us, and then we have, now we have residents that want to sue us. I appreciate the complexity of this. So I feel like a reasonable compromise is that we put better language in the zoning ordinance to cover the field better than just ball field, which I agree wasn't sufficient. So, that would be my proposal. And Helen, I hear what you're saying about the parking, but I really think tonight, this is about getting a zoning ordinance, and we should deal with parking, but I really hate to see us continue to be under builder's remedy, because in the future, we want to deal with parking. So I would ask you to consider your position, I'm not trying to force a change, but I'd at least ask you to consider.
I do have another question quickly, because last time, it didn't have the associated parking area included, correct? This, because I, I'm just wondering, because it is a second reading officially, and because of the intent from the last meeting, I feel like there was the discussion, honestly, like, I do, like, I am glad to hear that, you know, that it doesn't, you know, that we could protect the parking area, which, and not hurt the housing possibility, but I am nervous about the intent because of what happened at the last meeting around parking.
Okay, well, I mean, I made, I made the recommendation that we include the ball, that we protect the ball field, and it was my intent that we protect the ball field as a usable entity. Like, I don't know how it got warped into this, yeah, we're going to have a ball field, and we're going to put a fence around it so nobody can use it or something, I mean, it just doesn't make any sense to me.
No, 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 no.
So, no, no, but I'm just saying, so the whole idea that parking wouldn't go with the ball field, to me, it was a nonstarter, and when I was recommending we protect the ball field at the last council meeting, it included being able to park there so that families can use the ball field. So, so, I mean, that would have definitely been my intent when we talked about.
And I'm not talking about having housing built on the ball field, right?
No, no, I understand, I appreciate that, I just think that there's other, I mean, first of all, none of us want to see any housing in, at the ball field, at the parking lot, at the oak trees, zero, you know? Martin Miller doesn't want to see it, we don't really want to see it, we want to move forward, we've got other options. I also want to see us get a certified housing element, so that we can move forward in good faith, and I want to try to bring HCD on our side, and we're sending Terrence and Mark up there, and I think it's important that we give them their best shot at doing this. So, so that's my proposal. You know, we may not have the votes for it, I don't know, I don't know where you guys stand, and, you know, obviously, we're going to accept the vote of the council, but, but that would be my recommendation, and I would look for a motion along those lines if somebody's willing to make it.
Thank you. I'm going to make a motion that reads, and you can correct me if you prefer something else, a 2.48 acre portion of the Dorothy Ford Park site APN 77 da-da, included in table 6.6 of the 2023 to 2031 housing element, which shall exclude the existing little league baseball field and the adjacent surface parking lot, serving the baseball field as shown in the conceptual site plan on page 127 of the 2023 to 2031 housing element, shall be permitted to be developed as high density housing, and that owner occupied and rental multifamily uses are allowed by right for housing developments in which 20% or more of the units are affordable to lower income households on the specified portions of the Dorothy Ford Park site APN da-da-da-da.
Okay, I would second that. Is there any further discussion? Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Councilmember Flynn?
Yes.
Councilmember Hoppe?
No.
Councilmember Walter?
Tough choice.
Right. Okay, because I do not want the town to be sued, I am going to vote for this, but I am not, because of the parking, I'm not thrilled with it, so, but I will vote, yay.
I'm Mayor Taylor?
Aye.
And Mayor Hafner was absent, motion carries.
Thank you. All right, so that ends 5D. Thank you, everyone, for coming tonight, I'm sorry this has been so long. You're welcome to pick this up and discuss more with us later, you have our emails, please feel free to reach out as well. Again, thank you. So what I'd like to do now is I'd like to take a five-minute break, yeah, exactly, that'll give, and all of you are welcome to stay longer if you want, but, but obviously, I'm thinking that it's been long enough. Okay, I would like to call us back to order, thank you for the break. So, this has been a night of unusual ordering. One question I'd like to ask the council is, our regular agenda has two committees presenting, I know, so it's now 10 o'clock at night, it's 10:10 at night, we haven't finished the consent agenda yet. I was going to propose that we move the regular agenda to a different night, and if the council's okay with this, then I'd like to ask the two chairs if they would be willing to move to a different night, and if they are, I'd like to let them, you know, like, I see Ed's online, and I don't know, sure, who's the other? Fred, and, okay, so, can't tell if Fred's here, but he's probably on here someplace. Anyway, what do you guys think? Are you okay if we move the regular agenda items to a different night?
If they're willing.
Okay. Yeah, well, let me check with the council first, because that's the first thing, and then I'll get to the committee chair. You okay, Mary, if we, so, trying to get consensus of the council before I ask the chairs? Okay, yeah, I'm not trying to push it, I, I... Okay, well, all right, well, we'll look and...
My understanding, and I know Ed's online, but Ed has a new position, and he might not be chair much longer situation, I'm not sure, so we might want, if he can speak tonight, I think it would be helpful.
All right, so, so I'm trying to understand, so is the council saying that we should continue with the agenda, which is, we're going to go to the consent agenda, and then we're going to get to the regular agenda? Okay?
I mean, I would, if we do continue it, I would just have the presentations now, and then we'd do the consent agenda. Oh, wait, no, we do the warrant list first, sorry, warrant list. Yeah, no, sorry.
Okay, I mean, this is getting very irregular, but I guess I'm willing to poll 5C to see if there's any issues, and then we can vote on that one, Tony could go home. Then we would do the regular agenda presentations, and then we would come back to the rest of the consent agenda, is that...
Is someone planning to pull something?
Well, I was just gonna, well, no, I mean, we need to poll, unless we think we can just, is, okay, is anybody going to pull anything off the consent agenda? Okay, so then, I need to ask for public comment on the consent agenda, other than 5D. Yeah, so, that's okay, that's, I mean, if that's what we want to do, that's what I'll do. So, let's start with that. So Fred, are you jumping on to talk about the consent agenda, or are you jumping on to try to talk about your presentation?
I'm letting you know that I'm here, and I would prefer to talk tonight rather than wait for another opportunity.
Okay, perfect, well, that's, that was the decision of the council, so you're in luck. All right, so, let me start with 7562, Caroline, welcome. This is just on the consent agenda, other than 5D. You're muted? Caroline, you're still muted. There you go.
Thank you, finally. Yes, I have a, would like to comment on your warrant list, especially consultant Skrapka, and I want to remind the town council that there was no consent for the chair to give a presentation tonight. BPTS. So I'm very surprised that, that we are, it was postponed, because there's no priority list, we have not discussed it because of lack of, what is it, commitment of members, and we were not ready to present tonight.
Well, that's great.
Okay, so is that your comment, Caroline?
These are my two comments, yes.
Okay, thank you for your comments. Okay, next up is Ellen, Ellen, welcome. Ellen, are you there?
Yeah.
Okay, got it, we can hear you.
Okay, good, great. Okay, so my, is this the time to discuss the consent agenda E?
Absolutely.
Okay, so I don't know if you received the letter that I sent in, within all the, you know, Ford Field information, but this has to do with the staff report from Terrence and Catherine stating that for multi, excuse me, mixed use, to have three to six dwelling units per acre. Now, they don't include in that a caveat for 4370 Alpine Road, which, now that, if it stayed as one property, it all is great, but they're trying to subdivide that property, which, making a full acre in the back, which, in the housing element, clearly states that there would only be at the maximum five dwelling units in the rear, which is behind the creek, which, so which would over, which would come first? Would the housing element overrun a subdivision, making the back property a full acre, in allowing six dwelling units? Or would the housing element rules still apply of only having five dwelling units per acre in the back?
Okay, so...
Does that make sense?
It does, thank you, and we did receive your note, it was in 150 pages, but I actually did read it, so thank you for sending it.
Thank you, thank you.
Okay, so let me go, thank you for your comment, let me go on to the next comment.
All right.
So Rita, you're next, welcome.
Hi, thank you, I'm home, and hopefully those kids are, not so many of them in the schoolhouse right now, and...
Yes, the schoolhouse is nearly empty, we have, we have one visitor, and we have several tired students.
Well, that's okay, it's not for lacking, you know, if things were still going on, people would have, would have still been there, or if the day was structured a little different, people would have been there, and you'd be a different place in your agenda, but I am, you know, I'm agreeing with Ellen about 5E. Please, you know, there was enough discussion and her letter, so please pull 5E and have some discussion on it, because it, just, right now, it sounded like some discussion already started, so I guess 5E is pulled? Thank you.
I mean, not yet, but we're taking public comment, thank you. All right, is there any other public comment for the consent agenda? All right, seeing none, I will close public comment for the consent agenda. All right, so among the council, are there any items that you want to poll? Does anybody want? Okay, so we're going to pull 5E, I'd like to pull 5F, and because we're doing that, 5F is the record retention. So, okay, okay, good, so we got 5E and 5F, so if there's no other, I would accept a motion to accept A, B, and C. We've already covered D, and we've got E and F.
I would like to move to accept 5A and C.
What about B?
And B.
Thank you, okay.
I'll second.
Thank you. Guess we can just do voice vote, right, because we're all here?
Aye.
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 Okay, so the consent agenda passes, thank you, Tony, I apologize that you had to wait so late, but again, we appreciate your service. All right, why don't we start with 5E? So, Terrence, I kind of gave you a heads up on Ellen's comments, so can you respond to Ellen, and make sure you put it like right in front of you, I know it's annoying.
Can I, can I just ask you, while you're responding, whether, how this relates to Dorothy Ford Park, and whether, it does, it's in there, well, I don't know, the language is included in the language of the thing. Well, I don't know, the language is included in the language of the thing. Thank you.
Sure, I'll lead off with that. It is not related at all to Dorothy Ford Park, this is, this only deals with the mixed use zoning. So, this, this is only a slight modification in the text, I shouldn't say only, it's a, it's a modification in the text of the zoning ordinance that specifies that a housing, a mixed-use housing site can be 100% residential, or that it must be at least 50% residential. So, that is, that is all it does. It doesn't dictate what happens in, you know, how many units are built on a particular thing, it doesn't change the density, it's simply changing the, it's simply putting the guardrails from HCD's perspective, to give a little logic to it. They don't want people to zone property as mixed use, and then end up proving something that has minimal residential in it. So, they want to have at least 50% of a new development in mixed use be 50%, 50% residential, and that up to 100% can be. By the way, this is exactly the language that's in your adopted housing element, it's simply, the HCD wanted us to put it in the language. But the property that was, the comment to refer to has actually already been subdivided into a, into a one-acre parcel, but this change that's before you tonight has, does nothing, does not change the amount of density, how many units can be built, it's, it's only about those guardrails that the state wants to see on the zoning ordinance. Happy to answer any questions you have.
So, the housing element takes precedent? The restriction in the housing element for that property takes precedent?
It does, however, yeah, it does, however, again, the change that's in front of you is just the guard, just the guardrail.
All right, any other questions for Terrence?
I make a motion to approve 5E, I think.
I think. No, 5E?
Yes, 5E.
No, it's not, oh, sorry.
Yes, it's 5E, that's correct.
Seconding.
Okay, any other discussion on this? Okay, can we do voice vote again?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, 5E passes, all right, yeah. So, I pulled this, the reason I pulled it was, the concern I had was with the record retention, is it said two years for commissions, and we've gone to these action minutes, which I realize they tell you what actions, but they don't tell you the context. And I have to say, when I was in planning commission, you know, we'd have, you know, a CUP show up, that the last time it was looked at was 10 years ago, and if I got an action minute, I would have had no idea what was going on with the planning commission. So, I think my question here is, can we modify this for the commissions, or is there, is there a better way to approach this? I mean, I think you get my intent, is I want to make sure that either we have more robust minutes that you can read and say, okay, I understand what was going on at the time, or a transcript from the video, or something that gives me more than just action. So, so how would we approach that? And I think I'm directing this to the clerk, who's quite knowledgeable in these things, so what would be your recommendation?
Thank you, Vice Mayor Taylor. My recommendation is to make the planning commission, you're talking about the audio and video component, recordings.
I mean, my goal is to make sure that for the two commissions, ASCC and planning commission, that 10 years later, I could figure out why they made a decision, a particular decision. That's my goal, and I'm open to your suggestion on the best way to solve that.
I would suggest, so, over on the right is the column for the law. So, the law says that the recordings are required for 90 days.
Right.
After 90 days, you are, you know, authorized to destroy them if you wish. However, you know, in the total retention column, this consultant recommended two years for planning commission, but 10 years for city council. I would suggest making the commissions consistent with the council's retention. Now, if you, if you think 10 is too short, you can extend that too. So, it's on there, I don't imagine we would, we don't even store video, it's posted.
Right. But we'd be responsible for maintaining the account, it's, it's an account we own.
Yes.
Yeah, so, we'd be responsible for it now, so, okay. Helen, do you want to comment?
Can I just be clear then? And is it the staff reports and the video? That's being, or video and, and/or audio recording?
I believe he was just talking about audio and video recordings for the commissions and the planning commission and ASCC, and most likely all, the video component should probably be consistent across the board.
Right, okay. I definitely appreciate being able to go backwards and figure out prior decisions. So, I support, particularly with staff reports, I was worried even 10 years was too short for staff reports, so...
The agenda packets are permanent records.
Okay.
So, if you look on the...
Right, I just...
...court page, it's permanent.
Okay. And the other one I was worried about, I also was worried about, let's see, SB 1383 records need to be included in the solid waste record keeping. That is on page, goodness, there are no pages on this. Page 108? It's, actually says page 108 of 120. Okay, so, and then, for that one, and studies and reports, I would also suggest longer for that one. You know, to have studies and reports is helpful when you're... And I was surprised too, that, and then on page 112, the plans, currently two-plus years, really, after we find, if we get plans done, it's only for two years.
Plan, what page?
This is for emergency preparedness. One thing, that we attached our existing records retention schedule, as well as the proposed one. So, if you're looking at page 108 of the packet, that's what we have existing, that was adopted in 2016, but if you go up, scroll up, you'll find the proposed policy, and that's where I, I saw the reference to the SB 1383.
1383, okay.
It's on page 78 of the packet, and that's proposed for a 10-year retention schedule.
Okay. Great, wonderful, that one's in... Fun to read sideways.
Well, the sideways is being thrown away.
Okay, so, we, yes, so, agenda packets, great. I would also do agenda packets a little bit longer than two years. That's me. So, those are my comments. Thank you.
I agree, agenda packages should be longer than two years.
I just read this one on the, if you go to, so, the new records are broken down by department. You go to the clerk, town clerk, the agenda package should be permanent.
So, maybe I'm still in the current, but I am on page 78 here.
Okay.
We're the current, that's what we're trying to do.
Yeah, let's, yeah, we're going to approve the current. Okay, so, if it were permanent, you're, you're happy with it, yes? Agenda package.
Committees are two years.
Okay.
Right, so, I would say four years?
Which could, is...
Is your committee agenda packets?
Committee agenda packets. I just, I don't think, you know, I don't think that they need to be permanent necessarily, but...
Okay, I'll go for four years.
Great.
So, could, could you just...
Hang on, let me just finish with, so, Mary, do you have any other comments? I'm just trying to keep us in order here.
No, I, I think we should, I think we should approve this, this was a lot of work. They tried hard, and they have updated a lot of stuff, so, I'm all for voting aye.
Okay, great.
I just, I guess I was just a little confused going through this whole thing. So, we have a website where we have links to the agendas, and we have links to the audio, and there's links to everything, so, is this going to mean that everything that's on that website's just going to get kind of cut off, or because it's, the retention's gone, or the time is gone, or what?
This new retention schedule will really help us for the enormous amount of boxes that are being stored in about four different locations on this campus. So, it's really the bible of going forward and forward for all of the records.
So, it's mainly the paper?
It's mainly paper, but also, we need, we need retention schedule for every document ever produced, so we can know how to dispose of it or keep it.
So, I mean, I still kind of ask, on our website, we have links to digital documents, so is the expectation that we will no longer host those after the retention time is ended for a particular document? Is that what you're saying?
It's possible, not necessarily agenda package. You can, you can go beyond what's on the schedule. For example, I love going back for historical purposes to see old videos, I love that, I'd love to see 30 years, so you don't necessarily have to destroy after a certain amount of time, if there's interest in those, in those items, so... Yeah, these are just minimum.
And then who would be making the decision? You know, would it be based on the cost of hosting a certain amount of volume or something?
Well, don't forget, the minutes are the record. So, the video is nice, the transcript is nice, but the minutes are the record, the minutes will be here forever, permanently.
Okay.
So, at some point, either you're paying storage, or Granicus, or some, you know, vendor, and cloud, cloud storage.
Okay.
Rebecca, other questions?
I guess I just want to understand the process, when the decision is made, if this is passed, and we have retention of particular year, so then, who, who and how will the decision be made that, oh, we've hit the two years for these things? Will the town clerk just go and delete them, or will there be a process to make a decision about that, or how exactly?
So, this particular vendor has a very nice process, instructions are included, so you start listing what you would like to destroy, and each department has to put down what the retention is, and then upper management, I believe, even the town attorney is on the road. So, there's department head, town manager, town attorney, signs off on the destruction.
Okay, great, thank you.
Any other comments? Okay, so, I'm definitely in favor of the commissions being 10 years, I'm fine with committee agenda packets being four years. One thing I would note is, I'm very sympathetic to the boxes and boxes and boxes problem. I'm a little less sympathetic to the digital, I mean, cloud storage is incredibly cheap. So, you know, I feel like we're getting caught a little bit in the, I get the paper side of this, like, it makes total sense to me. I worry a little bit that we're applying a rule, a paper rule, to the digital world, which is a very different world. You know, I'm happy, you know, if the stuff's out in some huge directory that's searchable, then, you know, that would be okay. So, I guess that's what I'm trying to understand, is there, can we bias staff to, you know, think about this as a, definitely a paper record, and when they're considering whether they're deleting digital records, just sort of think about, do we really need to delete a digital record? Like, what's the real cost to it? Because I think what I'm hearing is, the reason we're doing this is cost, it's the cost of maintaining all this paper record. It's not, yeah, it's not a liability, we're not trying to delete this stuff, like, in corporations, you got record retention for different reasons, you kind of want to flush this stuff out of the system, so that it's not available for discovery, et cetera, but that's not the problem we're trying to solve. Is that, am I understanding this correctly?
Yes.
Not, well, I don't know, I'm asking, that's what I...
I think if you think about public records requests...
Yeah.
You don't want to have a warehouse full of documents...
Okay.
If your retention schedule says two years.
Okay.
Because if you have your warehouse full of documents, you're going, the clerk is going to go in to have to find those documents...
Okay, all right, so...
From 1812 or something.
Great, got it, all right, so, so basically, PRAs would be the other reason to basically have a strong document retention. Okay, that makes sense to me. So, then, I would accept a motion for the four years.
I have one frivolous, not so...
Don't say frivolous, please.
Not, not at this hour. The barn inspections, everybody knows I care about barn inspections, I think they are historically important, and there couldn't be very many of them, and you could give them to the historian, and then get rid of that item completely, because it has...
You say barn?
The barn inspections, yes. They are given no credit for being either historic or relevant, and I think they're historic, and they could be given to the historian, and then they could be out of your file, because I don't think we do barn inspections anymore.
There is a category for historical documents, such as photos behind you, all kinds of...
Yeah, I'd save the, I would save them as historic, they're not that many of them.
When we come across them, we'll save them.
Thank you, if you ever find them, for example.
Well, listen, let me ask, I mean, would it be reasonable to have somebody from the history committee on the review, the delete, the document deletion review? Because, I mean, they could just look at it and say, oh, wait a minute, we want to save these, and you go, great, you save them, but they're no longer our official records, but they can be part of the historical, that seems like a nice compromise, that would get what you want.
I love that.
And there might be other records, maybe there's interesting agendas or something that are in the process of being deleted, that they just, they look at it for its historic value. Okay, okay, so that, that, I'd like to see that as well, so, is anybody willing to make this motion? I realize it's getting slightly more...
I would like to make a motion to okay the retention with the following addendums. One, we have a historian on the review, and...
Any agenda packets, four years?
Four years and 10 years for commissions.
Can I add one more friendly amendment? To a grant application, it's got a minimum of five years, and I would just say seven years. Grant applications for, like, as a staff person, you need to be able to sometimes go back and get, yeah.
Is seven good enough?
Yeah.
Oh, I accept that in friendly amendment.
Okay, can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Can we do a voice vote on this? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, you guys got what you need, yeah? Okay, perfect, thank you, thank you for putting this together, this is a great step forward. Okay, now, I think, believe it or not, we're done with five, and we're ready to move to the regular agenda, so, what I'm gonna, what I'd like to do here is, I'd like to let both the committees do their presentations, then I'm going to ask for public comment, and then we'll go on to number seven. So, starting with the BPTS, Ed, if that's you, if you're still with us, you should be unmuted, welcome. You're still muted.
All right.
There you go, oh, now you're still muted.
You come down and visit us.
Yeah.
So nice down here.
Right, there you go.
Now getting muted.
Yep.
Excellent, good, I'm finally glad to get to this point. I wish our presentations could have been included along with the other presentations this evening, but that's another matter. Anyway, as I sit here in, well, it was sunny Los Angeles, but it's now dark Los Angeles, I will try and recount the five priorities that BPTS discussed at its last meeting at the beginning of this month, and communicate those to you as clearly as I can in a short time. Contrary to some other comments this evening, we have had an opportunity to discuss this, and the formulation of these priorities was given as full of consideration as the committee was able to make. So, our first priority, as I have the wording correct, that I believe that it was recorded in our minutes, is to restore and create links with committees and commissions to enable BPTS to work to the full extent of its charter. For example, to ensure there are proper formal mechanisms to review traffic and parking implications for new developments, to the extent permitted by the law, and that'll be where, you know, where there are meeting restrictions and other, other types of things, but otherwise, you know, we had some recent cases where... But otherwise, you know, we had some recent cases where although a planning procedure for something like Priory School was in process and things like the wedge. Full consideration and a full involvement of the safety considerations of those things. Where there wasn't really a mechanism for them in the same way that there are for some simple residential projects. So that's one element of the priorities that we would like to look at. Enable the committee to work within its charter and to do its job to properly be able to review traffic safety surrounding new projects. Item two, sort of in pursuit of this, but with a wider scope towards road and pedestrian safety, is to complete the draft local roadway safety plan and to submit that to town council for recommendation. So that would, final pieces of that are to identify three intersections as priorities for attention and create a target objective for accident reduction. My notes have got garbled here. My computer actually went berserk earlier as I was preparing for the meeting. So I may have lost some of my notes. But yeah, so then we would follow up to submit that document to town council with a recommendation that council adopts that local roadway safety plan. That's item two. Item three will be to promote and support safe routes to school in collaboration with town and the Portola Valley School District and other committees who have safe routes as part of their purview. Item four. Oh, that's just, I beg your pardon, this has got completely garbled. We did have a safe routes. I'm sorry, item three should read, study and support planning for improved emergency evacuation capacity. So this is a look at where we can include three lanes of roadway on our arterial routes and other options for maximizing exit routes in town. And we'd like to work, you know, as much as we can with EPC and any other committee and commission to enable that to be realized. Item four is to provide input and clear recommendations on preferred, preferred use of funds to be made available by Stanford University in connection with the Portola Terrace Development. If you remember at the final planning commission meeting, Stanford revealed that they would be willing to commit $100,000 to assist in addressing road safety issues in on Alpine Road in association with the development project. And BPTS seeks a role in making sure those funds are used to the best advantage. Finally, and I hope with the agreement of everybody, to define and recommend wildlife, wildlife awareness and other safety signage such as information on the AM 1680 Transport Information Service. So that will be to, you know, designate and alert drivers that we have a wildlife corridor with signs at the entrance to town. And such as the determination of location is, is made where we know we have active wildlife crossings to have supporting signage at those locations as well. And that pretty much concludes the five priorities that we have. I hope that is clear. I apologize for the confusion that my computers caused me. Thank you.
Yeah, that was great. I mean, it was a little confused, but I, I got the numbers out. I, I renumbered my list, so we're good. So are there any questions from the council for Ed? None here? Mary?
You did a really good job. Thank you.
Thank you, Mary.
Okay, all right. So then we've got a couple of hands online. The first one is 7562. That would be Caroline. Welcome Caroline.
Thank you. I'm a PPTS member. I'm also the secretary. The minutes have not been finalized and I don't believe that what our chair has proposed was the consent from the members. Two members were absent last meeting. There were several new topics brought up at the meeting. And so what you, the presentation does not represent the full representation of the members. So I don't think she should accept that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Hey, Rita, you're up next. Welcome Rita.
Thank you for taking my comment. My only comment is, and when I, when they do have the meetings, the sheriff that's supposed to be giving a report is not there and not giving a report. And, you know, it's, I guess it's one of the items that we're paying for in our contract. I, I know Tony's not there anymore. We either need to claw some money back from them or ask them to give us the reports. The sheriff reports that they're not showing up to present. You know, in support of, of Ed and, and that committee, you know, they're, they're doing the best they can. But, you know, things that we're paying for already, we, we need to be able to present it to the residents. And please retain documents. Thank you.
Okay, thank you for your comment. Christie, you're up next. Welcome Christie.
Thanks. I just had a suggestion regarding getting a proposal from the police department versus the sheriff. Everyone I've met from the sheriff, I really enjoy talking to them. They're very, when they come to my house, if, if I call them on something, I'm right here on Alpine Road. But we're having a difficult time paying the sheriff bills. And I just think we could partner with Menlo Park and see what that bid is. And I just want to say that.
Okay, thank you for your comment. All right, I think that concludes the BPTS report. Can we move to the trails? Fred, you're still on. Thank you for hanging in there. You got the floor.
All right, sounds good. Did y'all get the email that I sent with the document that I'm going to go over?
Okay, somehow I think I, I've missed it.
Okay.
Yeah, I missed it as well.
No worries.
Can you, but I, but I will read it. So, I mean, I think if you can maybe do the, the light, I mean, given it's.
I will do the light version.
Yeah, be, be light. And then certainly Helen and I will read it. If we have any questions, we know who to talk to.
Great.
Send it directly to our town emails. That'd be great. Thank you.
Will do. Okay, so the role of the committee is to recommend routing for and improving construction of new trails, recommending trail usage restrictions and maintenance needs for existing trails and approve the yearly budget for all of those things. So in accordance with that, our top priority is capital improvements to the trails. We really need to fix the Eagle Trail. We also have some fixes on Palmer and Manoka. We need some signs fixed. And we also have identified the need for some initial signage prohibiting fires. We've had a couple of incident incidences where people have been smoking in Coal Mine Ridge and one instance where we had someone with an open flame camping stove in Coal Mine Ridge. That's number one, trail capital improvement. Number two is resolving the open questions on trail easements specifically on the Saucel Trail. Number three is following up on the trail related site development, site developments in town, the Hawthorns and Portola Terrace. And then the fourth one is community engagement. And then on the document that you'll have, we have identified members of the committee who are responsible for driving each one of these priorities. And then the last thing that I'll just note is our, our last one on community engagement. The horse fair is coming up on May 17th. I encourage everyone who's listening, all the, the council members to attend. It's by far our most popular event that we have. It's a really, really great event for the town. I'll pause there.
Great, perfect. Thank you for your update. Any questions for Fred? Okay, Helen, why don't we start with you this time?
Fred, thank you for your quick, and everything that you've done in your quick report. So I appreciate what you guys are doing. Couple of questions. And how do you, we, I believe the town used to have a, like, maintenance consultant who would do Coal Mine Ridge and such. Last week when I was up there, it was pretty overgrown. So I'm, I'm just checking in on what's going on with a consultant status or if we have a consultant or if I jumped that.
We, I can't comment on whether we used to have a consultant. The town has been responsible for mowing all of the trails over the last several years. That is still the plan this year. I believe that the town will contract some of that work out. Scott in maintenance is in charge of, or I, I understand he is the one who's leading, getting the contracts done. One of the things you'll notice in Coal Mine Ridge probably is it's going to be one of the last places that we do mowing. And that's at the request of several residents to make sure that the wildflowers are allowed to fully bloom and go to seed so that we don't prematurely trim them so that we don't get them next year. I believe that the mowing is going to start after mid-May. That contract, last time I checked in with Scott last week, had not yet been finalized. But his estimate was that was when they would get started doing the mowing.
Thank you. That's my, that was one of my questions. Thank you.
Mary?
But it's a great time to go see wildflowers in Coal Mine Ridge for sure.
Yeah, they're amazing. Thank you.
Fred, I, I just had a, a comment. Are you watching the crosswalks and where they're being placed in regards to the trails? And also would, are you considering the possibility of a horse level button if we're really having activated crosswalks?
So we have, we have not been engaged on the activated crosswalks recently. I think it's a great idea to have a horse level button. I think the last time we reviewed the project that's happening right across, you know, not exactly across from the Priory, but kind of at that intersection of, what is it, Cordermadera Road, Portola Road and then roughly Brookside, I think. That would be probably a, a great place for that. But we, we haven't had much conversation about crosswalks. Actually, I would tend to defer to the BPTS committee on that and to pull us in and consult on the issues. But we haven't, we haven't discussed additional crosswalks. I, I do think that that will be important for Portola Terrace. Because I imagine that there will be lots of people wanting to go up into the trails there and needing to cross Alpine Road. And so we'll need some sort of mechanism for them to do that safely.
So can I speak to that for a minute? Ed Holland, Ed Holland. Bicycle pedestrian committee has worked on that a lot. There have been some issues with the crosswalk installation, which is unfortunate because it's hurting us with the transportation authority where the grant money is from. But I believe, and maybe Mark can speak to this, the consultant who's been hired to do the installation will be coming, I think, is it this month or the next month, to speak to the bicycle pedestrian committee about, we're, unfortunately, I think we're kind of locked into our plan at this point because of the money situation. But maybe we can ask them, when are they coming, Mark? Can you speak to that?
Plan now is he'll be there with me on May, on May 7th. And he is looking into the horse button.
Oh, there we go. May 7th. Thank you.
Any other questions? Okay, Rebecca?
Oh, yes. Fred, thanks so much for coming to the committee, to the council and thanks so much for being so patient. A couple of quick questions. You have a couple of beautiful maps that are on, posted to the website that are listed as not adopted by council. So what exactly needs to happen in order for that to actually be adopted?
I might ask you the same question. There was, we, we, we had a, a huge effort to put those maps together. And, you know, someone in town, Dave Evans, went to painstaking work to create the map. The committee did exhaustive research. There are concerns around various elements that we've included on the map, ways in which we've characterized things on the map. There's lots of feedback in terms of, you know, there, there, as, as, as you all well know, there are lots of opinions on how to do lots of different things. And so rather than go through a process of trying to necessarily make these official, we felt that we could at least get them out to the public because we thought they were a fantastic resource for people. And so we have put them with this guidance. I can't remember who, who told us to, that we needed to put this on the website in order to make it, make them available. But we followed that guidance. And so they're out there. If there's a way for us to have them become official, would love to help support that. As, as they are now, you know, I think they're a, a fine, fine resource for people who are interested in, in actually not just understanding, you know, where particular trails are. But one of the things we like to highlight for people is that we are at the center of multiple trail networks. And that's what we've tried to highlight on our map. You can see there's Westridge Trails. You can see there's PV Trails. You can see that there's Mid Penn Trails. You know, you can even sort of see how you can connect into Palo Alto regional open space. And so we think it's a really useful utility for anyone who's particularly interested in, in, in trails. But yeah, if there's a way for us to get them, you know, officially ratified or recognized, be happy to participate in that.
Okay. And then I guess my other question was, oh, has there been discussion at your committee about creating an actual bike path from Cordermadera School along Alpine Road that connects to the, the, the rest of the paved Alpine trail?
So this is a big part, sorry, you can finish, sorry.
Particularly the portion of, along the Hawthorns where it's kind of tricky.
Yep. So that's a key request that we have in terms of our engagement with the Hawthorns Public Access or the now finished Hawthorns Public Access Working Group. And it's a key part of the trail element or trail plan that I believe has been officially adopted by the Mid Penn Board. It's something to flag for y'all. When the conditional use permit comes up, this is an item that we're definitely going to want to make sure is done in a line with, with what we want to do. And, and the gist of it is we want to move that trail, technically it's east sort of away from the road. Widen it, make it multi-use and make it so that kids can actually travel on bicycles down that portion. You know, right now, as anyone who's been on it, it's pretty treacherous. It's, it's a little debatable about whether it would be, you know, in terms of after school, it would be a good thing because there are so many kids on it to begin with that you'd ever want to actually ride a bike while there's so many kids walking. But that I think is a, a different, a different consideration. But it's our top request for the development of the Hawthorns property, followed by making sure the internal trails are multi-use. But we really want to get Alpine Trail fixed and we need cooperation with Mid Penn in order to do it. So it also started, just to be clear, it involved removing the fence that's currently there that I don't think is in keeping with whole, lot of other aspects of how we want to have fences in town either. So it's a, it's a top priority there. I don't know though, that it will get all the way down to the paved portion in front of Alpine Hills because there's a section, I think it's Firethorn Way there that, that intersects there. I think what we'd want to see is kids directed down Firethorn towards Alpine Hills. And then coming back to the question about crosswalks, that would probably be another great place to put a crosswalk for the kids who do end up at, at Alpine Hills, have them cross those trancos rather than having them cross Alpine Road.
Okay. And then have you been in contact at all with Stanford about the Alpine Trail that's on that side of the road? That's in front of the future Portola Terrace? Because they are responsible for redoing that trail and are supposed to do it in conjunction with the town.
Yes, so that's, that's why we have, so this is why we have both of these projects on our priority list for this year is we're engaging on these specific topics. So Alpine Trail, making sure that it is moved inward and recreated because we, we know that it will be disrupted obviously during the building of, of the houses there. We, one of the topics generally on the Portola Terrace project is that in line with how developments have been executed in Portola Valley Ranch and in Blue Oaks, we want to see the, the trails actually constructed before the houses. we want to see the, the trails actually constructed before the houses go up so that we can make sure that they're set in the right way and even, you know, potentially give people access to them. So we'll be focused on making sure that Alpine Trail is, is taken care of. We think there's a lot of options to make it a, a better trail than it is right now. Just maybe to close off on, on Portola Terrace, the other elements there that we're concerned about are there's a, going to be a connector trail up from Alpine into the Westridge Trail. It's called the Canyon Trail. And then we want to make sure that we get the trails study done that Stanford has agreed to fund for the upper portion of that property to potentially connect that upper Canyon Trail down below on the more southern side of the property.
Okay. And just one final question. You may have touched on it. Your, your first priority was the trail capital improvements. But, but then there was a question about maintenance of trails. So is the committee actually going around the trails and keeping track of which ones need work? Or how, how do you actually determine that?
Yeah. So we used to, we used to assign everybody trails to, to, to walk and kind of keep track of. With the advent of PV Connect, we found that people being able to just take pictures of the issues was much more timely in terms of taking care of issues. Many of us have been on the committee, well, I'm probably the, I'm not the most junior member of the committee at six years, but I'm, I'm close to it. We've got folks who've been on the committee for several years and, and as a result have, have lots of connections within town. So we have sort of a, you know, good network of people who, who get feedback to us about issues on trails if they don't put it into PV Connect. And so generally feel pretty good in terms of the coverage. I'm myself, I'm an avid trail runner. You know, so you guys are putting me a little to the test in terms of my endurance tonight. But I, I probably cover all of the trails in town every three months myself personally. And, you know, absent that, lots of, we, we, we get lots of feedback on, on the maintenance. So if folks do see something, if you're like, we're not, not seeing it, not getting it taken care of, please holler. I'm not going to give my email out. You can, you can email Rebecca.
And I just want to end by encouraging maybe to send a little blurb to our town administrative analyst who puts together our bi-weekly newsletter, just to let people know that, that they should use PV Connect to, if they, if they're out running trails and they see a problem to, to use PV Connect. I think it would be great to have sort of a presence from the Trails Committee giving that advice. Thanks.
Yeah, happy to do it.
I'll keep my brief. So thanks, Fred. And yeah, we have fabulous trails here. So I really appreciate that you guys are on it. We've got one public comment. So if you could hang on just to hear what the public has to say and then I'll close this item out. So Corley, you're up.
First name. Anyway. Anyway. I am wondering when Willow's Commons went in and they repaved just in front of Willow's Commons with all the construction. The actual construction cars went further towards me and they never had to redo the part of the trail in that area. So I'm just thinking that it's, I think we need to look, be realistic, how many cars are parking when people are working on construction? And how far from a construction site that you have to repair? That's my point, as far as trails.
Thank you.
Because they were double parking. They parked on the left and the right of the trail. So a lot happened there and it wasn't really fixed all the way down to the next road. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Okay. With that, I don't see any other public comment. So I am going to close out the regular agenda. Thank you, Fred. Thank you, Ed, for hanging in there. We'll move on to number seven. So I didn't see any colleague memorandum. So anybody have anything to say here? Can I move on? Okay. Subcommittee reports, liaison, regional, if there weren't any written reports, anybody have oral reports?
Well, I had the pleasure of listening to the wildfire preparedness, I guess, study session for MROSD. And they've started a new department for prevention of fire. And they did, and they seem to be extremely well-developed. They're working extensively on Skyline. They did some parts of, of Wendy Hill. They've been doing mitigation like MAD on, on Ola Hunda, which we've been looking at. And I think, I think they're really, finally, I think it's really important that somebody like me continues to bug them about, about staying on top of the restoration of Wendy Hill in particular because we've got so much brush growing up on Wendy Hill. And I, I will follow up with them after that presentation because I had to interrupt it to come here.
Okay, thank you. Any other subcommittee liaison or regional reports? Okay. Is there any public comment on number eight? All right. Seeing none, I'm going to close eight and go to nine. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
I would like to make that motion.
Second.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Thank you, everyone. I know it's been a late night. Appreciate. Good night.
The agenda was very fast.